Seven o'clock PM on Thursday, January twelfth. And I'll call for finance committee meeting. Order, this is a joint meeting with the select board. This meeting is being recorded from the finance committee. I have Tom Harkins, Mike Pratt, Dean Nahas, Peter Twining, Maury Creighton, and the old men and myself, Sarah Melch. Becky, you want to open this meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to call to order the joint and Tom's luck board meeting of Thursday, January twelfth. Roll call vote. Kathy Bellata.
Here.
John Round.
Here.
Brian Solacy.
Here.
Anne Harrison.
Here.
And Becky Jakes. Here.
Thank you. I thought that because we're trying to figure out the staffing across all of the branches of public safety, that we would start with presentations from each of the public safety officials and not ask any questions. And then go over the memo that Greg sent. And then ask all the questions once we've everything laid on the table, if that's all right. Okay. So I thought that we would start with harbor master, then do police chief, then do fire.
Oh, boy, it looks like shot clock. You want to plug into the system?
Oh, so. So I do have the PowerPoint here.
I, you can access screen sharing.
Oh. That way you don't have to watch me fumble.
Not fun.
Yeah. It'll be more fun if I get embarrassed.
All right.
So I made you a co-host. Fred.
She should be able to see my screen.
Diana, you logged into Zoom?
I am not logged in.
Then I should be on, just let you show your screen.
Is that what you're doing, Greg?
He was trying to call the PowerPoint up on his screen.
Yep. Oh, okay.
Let's go immediately to the next. So I like to be on your send of the questions. Other one.
Yeah.
Questions, I found the information, I spoke to the Manchester Harbor Master. To get these numbers. You're here. First question. Transients, what did the transient traffic like harbor? Depending on the month of the voting season. And the weather. We would have.
Hit the little, hit the little space up top. But, yep, right there.
There we go. Thank you.
We would have two hundred and fifty in a day, six hundred. I'm sorry, this is for weekend. Hundred votes for a weekend, coming out with being Black Beach and then coming into the town dock. And Black Beach anywhere from fifty to two hundred votes in a weekend. And we have about twelve miles waterfront. As far as the operational budget, most of it comes from the waterway fund. I know that insurance help insurance and that insurance for the boats. And the dumpster over re, Mascanamo Park. Come out of other plots in town. So I can't say that the operation is entirely funded by the waterway fund. But it is largely. Our capital projects, there's a I'm not sure if you've got it, but there was a piece of paper where I listed.
Yeah, I think we weren't going to go into the actual capital budget or operating budget, but talk about staffing mostly.
Yeah.
And we're going to do the budget on another meeting.
Oh, okay, so this year. If you want to go to the next, it's just the same information for the different communities.
Okay, good, yeah, we did want that, yes.
Hang on. They're in the police department. Harbor Department is part of the police department. Their revenue covers their operation and salary annually. And then capital projects are grants and funded through taxation. They have, they have a spot called World's End, which is similar to our Long Beach. And they see numbers there equivalent to our Long Beach and Black Beach. Also have an island where people camp.
Sorry, when you, that revenue, that's what?
A moorings and slip fees and just the different excess tax.
Specific revenue generated from the water.
Correct, yeah. Newburyport, they're an enterprise fund. And so every dime they spend comes out of the money that they collect from their waterway fees. Paul of Newburyport also manages the beach. The Long Island, he has a whole huge staff that he hires from over there. Has real trouble finding lifeguard cell. They only have two and a half miles of waterfront, it's basically right down the river. And nothing that he spends money on comes out of taxation at all. They have their, as far as transient goes, they do have a transient dock similar to ours right in front of the Harbor Master office on the river. They have a lot of voters that come down from Havrell. Down in Merrimack, it's, it's a busy river. They're, they're on the borderline, he has a pretty large staff. He got one of my people, they went up there.
Do they, do they monitor within the river?
Yes.
Sorry, no question.
So they share the river with Salisbury. And there's the Salisbury Harbor Department. But I will say the bulk of the responsibility for what goes on from a Harvard apartment falls on Newburyport. Paul. Again, enterprise fund. He's been there for almost thirty years. And he has one other staff person, he, he describes the world's end a lot like I, I would describe our no wake zone, he gets the folks coming in, his goal is to slow people down. So that they aren't creating giant wake and causing mass destruction. They have more waterfront, they have two islands. One of those camping, he has a ferry dock that the state lands at. He's responsible for their five waterfront properties that are owned by the town. Properties owned by the town and the lease to restaurants, to boat clubs. And he's responsible for that, but the town doesn't generate any revenue from those, strangely enough. So I just threw this in there, retirement, I'm group one. Harbor Masters and the state are trying to be at least group two. To be like dispatch. I feel pretty strongly that the Harbor Master, whoever that is, be the next person, should be at least group two. And if they're going to be required to be the M T. Then they should be group four. So, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting, but what's a group?
Oh, so there are four different designations for retirement group. Group one is administrative. And it's really, the designation changing for me really doesn't mean much because I haven't been here long enough to really see the advantage. I've just vested, so, but group one can retire at sixty-five. I think it's twenty to twenty-five percent of whatever you are, if you've got ten years in. Group two, you can retire at sixty. And whatever number of years, you start at twenty-five percent at ten years and then it goes up annually. Group four, you can retire at fifty-five. So this is, group four is police officers, fire, public safety. And group three, I think you guys can correct me, but I think that's strictly state quarters. Yeah, and it should be noted, the, the previous other master was group four. Right, so I'm, I'm not requesting that buy them tight. But get this increased group designation. All I'm saying is that all your Harbor Masters in perpetuity going forward should have this designation. And I, so one more? And title change. There's been discussion amongst Harbor Masters about changing the title from Harbor Master to a Harbor Manager or Harbor Director. Doesn't change the nature of the job. But the designation is starting to feel problematic.
Can you speak further to that, please?
Well, the term master.
Well, in terms of what you think it, it's evolving to.
Well, I, I, I thought Harbor Manager, but then Debbie downstairs said, no, 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 it should be Harbor Director.
I'm thinking of the duties.
Oh, the duty, duties don't change. For now, we still have enforcement of ninety, thank you, I couldn't remember, it's ninety B, thank you. So that's the voting law, all Harbor Masters have the authority, I can stop votes. I can do safety checks, I can write a summons to pay a fine. Civil violations. I'm pretty sure that eventually in the state, the post commission who oversees what everybody can do is going to say Harbor Masters can no longer enforce anything. And that means if I'm out by the no wake zone and somebody goes tearing by and I, I go like this and they go like this, I can't turn on blue lights. I can't chase them down and make them stop. So there was some talk that it could happen this spring. Could happen in five years. But that, that change is coming, so.
On that point, I'm just curious, what percent at a high level of Harbor Masters are like already law enforcement and therefore it's not?
I'm sure almost every Harbor Department is part of this department. Here we have Ipswich on the North Shore. Danvers. So there are some departments that already have that, that issue solved. For community, communities like Newburyport, Hall, Hingham, it's Police Department already, Manchester. That needs to be figured out. I would like to think, I'd like to say that Manchester is far down the road in the discussion between departments. On, on what that, and I think the chief and I have come a long way to trying to figure that out. I would much rather have Manchester in a place where that transition, if it's going to happen, isn't stark and impossible to try to figure out as part of the discussion tonight. And, and we are in lockstep. Chief and I. So.
Thank you. We'll ask questions. Please, Cheryl?
I was going to use the podium, that's all right, if I'm in, I, I don't think you have the updated version of my PowerPoint. Yeah, I, I made a change. These are live documents, Chris. It's a living document, really. They will be a second. At least you don't have to get dry mouth. It's maybe a little bit longer than than by on.
You didn't want to look at us, you know, while we do this presentation.
But it's best if you go through the Zoom so that shows up.
I think they were planning on.
You got a projector there?
Have checked for there, yeah.
Okay.
It's sixteen twenty-one, yeah, he's there.
He's there, but this doesn't go. Tell you what.
All right, so with me tonight, I have Lieutenant Mark McCoy, who is my second in command, if you guys don't know. And Sergeant Steven Lou, who is my number three. As you can see by the PowerPoint, he started working on this in October. Now becoming a kind of a critical moment in our staffing overall. P D moving forward. So so a minimum staffing overview, and this is kind of where we are now. So the Manchester Police Department currently has a two-person minimum officer staffing model. That means at any given moment, there's two officers on patrol. This model is the same model that we can kind of trace back to the late nineteen seventies or the early nineteen eighties when we, when the, when the department unionized and became, first started to work on a four-day on, two-day off schedule. So to put it in perspective, when my grandfather worked here, he was on a four and two. So when is the call for service? It's a common practice in law enforcement to have the two officer response. And it's basically a primary officer and a backup officer. So in other words, by the nature of this model, any call for service ties up both officers and leaves the rest of the town uncovered and there's no cushion. Any additional calls that occurred during this period, it completely overwhelms the patrol staff. And we typically have relied on neutral aid or wait for a delayed response. And it's obviously depending on the nature of the call. In twenty twenty-one, we had eleven thousand four hundred and fourteen calls for service. So to put this in kind of in perspective, eleven thousand four hundred and fourteen times the patrol staff was tied up and complete, and the town was completely uncovered for an additional call. I ran the calls for twenty twenty-two and we are now at twelve thousand nine hundred and seventeen. So we have, we have seen a slight increase in, you know, in a, in a year. So to attempt to manage these shortcomings in the past, we've routinely needed to rely on the following measures. As I said, reliance on mutual aid. Other cities and towns, sometimes that's not available. And, you know, when I, when we talk up, when we go through this, this presentation about staffing, you know, I just want to reiterate that this is not unique to Manchester by the sea. This is, this is, this is public safety, fire and police across the board, pretty much across the country. So we've also, you know, to, to, to handle this, we scramble the poll offices from nearby private details. Calling an office from home, you know, we have an emergency callback procedure, sometimes that takes, you know, ten to fifteen minutes and, you know, I'm the closest one, so I'm the one that gets the calls all the time and it happens. The last time that happened was over Christmas break on the New Year's Eve. Both the lieutenant and I were called in at three AM. Calling in future shifts early, we, we, we try and do that if no one else is available. Or responding to calls, calls alone, and that's, that's a huge safety issue. You know, again, a clear this is not ideal and ultimately these tactics are unreliable and, and you know, the real answer is we've, we've been very lucky. So this is an analysis of our current staffing needs that we act, this is, this is, this is, Sergeant Lou and I worked on this. This is for a two officer minimum. So the total hours needed to find one officer for an eight-hour shift, three hundred and sixty-five days a year is two thousand nine hundred and twenty hours. And with the officers being on a four and two schedule, they're, they're available thirty-seven point three-three hours a week. So you times that by fifty-two weeks and it's nineteen forty-one. So then we looked at all our contractual time off. We looked at our vacation time, our holidays, our sick time, our personal days, training days, comp time, court time, and anything extra that, that we do. And we came up with an average of each one, so that adds up to fourteen oh five. So the total number of hours needed to have two officers on a shift, twenty-nine twenty times six, six a day, so it was two on each shift, seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty hours, so number of staff needed divided by the time available. It shows that we need twelve point four, so almost thirteen offices full-time to run a two officer minimum. So we've been fluctuating in the past, in the last couple of years, because of different leaves and injuries between nine and twelve offices. Which is considerably under the, the thirteen officer minimum that we need for at least two, two people. Currently, we have eight on patrol and two waiting for the police academy right now. So as we all know, police reform has been signed into, into law by the governor on December thirty-first twenty twenty, so Governor Baker signed an act relative to justice and equity and accountability in law enforcement in the Commonwealth. This reform has now established mandatory certification progress process for police officers and seeks to improve the accountability and transparency in the field of law enforcement. It also aims to support law enforcement in hiring and promoting qualified candidates. So, so with that said, it, it affects the smaller communities like Manchester, who routinely use reserve officers to fill in the, the gaps and openings for, for our patrol schedule. The post commission, police officers standards of training has basically eliminated the reserves. The reserve academies do not exist anymore. So therefore, we cannot hire reserve officers. So regarding reserve officers who have already been working since when this law went into effect, they, the post commission, in order to have them remain certified, they have to meet some, some qualifications. And one of those qualifications is amassing twenty-four hundred hours of police on-the-job-related experience. Now, details, road details, you see the officers out there directing traffic, that does not count. Only fifty percent of the officers sitting on the desk doing dispatch count fifty percent of those hours. So completing all these bridge classes is intended to bridge the gap between the difference between the full-time police academy and the part-time reserve academy. So the difference is, it's about a hundred and twenty hours of in-person training that, that these officers have to attend and about eighty hours of online training. And that's about two hundred hours that, like I said, is intended to bridge the gap between full-time and part-time. Sorry, missed the slide. So if a reserve officer can, can meet these requirements, they have an option to be bridged and certified as a full-time officer and hired by other communities. So ultimately, reserve officers had had a deadline of January first of twenty twenty-seven to be either be bridged or seek a career change. This has caused an undue burden on communities, like I said, such as Manchester, forcing us to reevaluate our staffing and reserve officers as they leave for full-time positions elsewhere or leave law enforcement altogether. So since post was, was adopted, we've had twelve reserves leave. And I can name each one of them with, where they go. Straw left law enforcement. Harvey is a retired officer who is leaving us at the end of the month to take a full, full-time job in the private sector. Jones left the state, Snell went to Gloucester, Flomp and La Bosco, they left law enforcement, Torres went to a college, Gannon went to Beverly, Fusco left law enforcement, DeSantis left law enforcement. And LaConte and Kim, who were full-time academy-trained officers on our list, have taken full-time jobs in Gloucester. Rock point, excuse me. So with the laws of the reserve offices, like I mentioned on the previous slide, many to take other full-time positions, we found ourselves with a reserve staff that's almost completely depleted. The most recent reserve officers who we hire, have hired are retired officers. And this obviously puts a limit on what they can earn in the public sector due to their pensions. So in other words, the inevitable loss of reserve officers happening, happening much faster than we could have anticipated. And the need to hire a full-time staff to, to avoid, to avoid this crucial condition is our, huge to our ability to function moving forward. So over the past few years, the reserve officers have been dwindling. And a coverage has caused, and, and, and that coverage has caused our overtime to skyrocket. This has led, led to a, you know, I can't say enough, a dramatic increase in our forced overtime. And, and we want to avoid the officer burnout. So since in July of, or in the, the total year of twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and sixty-two times we had to force an officer who wasn't working into work, a full-time officer. And since July, this fiscal year, we've had sixty-nine forced shifts. And it's because, you know, understaffed, we did long-term injuries and long-term leave. Covid has had a, a little bit of effect. And the lack of, you know, the reserve availability, they, they they can only work so much because they have other full-time jobs. So in addition to the, the reserve officers, one thing I want to point out, the post commission has eliminated our auxiliary police officer, which was a non-paid position. We had twelve or thirteen people at, at one time as a non-paid auxiliary police officer. And these are, are people trying to get their foot in, in the door, so we send them to training and they would help us out on certain types of events. So like historically, we, we relied heavily both on our auxiliaries and reserves to augment our full-time staff, like I said. But we, this year was our first year, this fourth of July, of not having this, this auxiliary staff and the lack of reserves. And with, and we had to call in details from other communities and, and we were lucky to have six, six people. But just with the, the traffic posts alone, we had twelve unfilled positions. So that, that's a, that's a huge, huge loss for us. So as we're all aware, that the, we are currently transitioning to an in-house dispatch model. I mean, to an out, from an, from an in-house dispatch model to regional dispatch. And, and this brings us a few options and how we could staff the police station lobby as dispatch, obviously is going to move off-site. One option is to use civilian clerks. However, we've spoken to other communities, this proves to be ineffective in many ways. Without having to perform the dispatch role, these clerks would generally only be used to greet visitors and then call a police officer in off the street. Uh, without having to perform the dispatch role, these clerks would generally only be used to greet visitors and then call a police officer in off the street to be, uh, handled as the situation, pretty much. The officer, uh, the other, the other option is to staff the lobby with a police officer. It's still a strong argument to be made that this is a more functional, cost-effective way to fill this need. And in the following slide, we'll show you some differences here. So, this is the difference between what a civilian clerk can do and what a, what a, uh, uh, police officer. They both have the ability to greet visitors, yeah? Take a report, well, not necessarily. Uh, ability to handle a, uh, walk-in medical, nope. Uh, prisoner watch, uh, nope. Uh, and I just want to, uh, reiterate, uh, our, our arrests for this year, uh, are, are up. We had sixty-seven arrests in twenty twenty-two, which is, uh, a huge increase from the years past. Um, the ability to take first complaint, witness sexual assault complaints, uh, no. Uh, core information, no. Uh, take complaints, overall, no firearms licensing, that, that, that could be debatable with, with, uh, some training. But we put no, because it's a cost, uh, with the training and filling details. By contract, the, the officer in charge of the shift has to fill, fill the details. So speaking with other chiefs, in, in our experience, uh, Manchester residents seem to want to walk into the lobby to report serious ongoing, things like I just said. Uh, you know, harassment, sexual assaults, extortion, larceny, and, and et cetera, rather than have an officer respond to the home. Therefore, a police officer lobby is the most sensible option in these circumstances. And it's, uh, twenty twenty-one, we had six hundred and forty-one walk-ins. And for twenty twenty-two, I ran the numbers yesterday, we had seven hundred and forty-seven. So that's a little bit of an increase. So police officer versus a clerk. So in addition, like the previous slide said, utilizing a police officer to staff the lobby can also help alleviate some of the patrol shortcomings that were, that were addressed early in the two officer minimum. Uh, emergency situations, an officer assigned to lobby will be able to temporarily transition to a safe lobby, which you'll see in the schedule here in a minute, uh, to assist with the following things, the transport of prison to the hospital, Middleton jail, go to court, or take someone to a juvenile facility, there'll be no overtime required. Suicide watch. Now, if someone's on suicide watch, we have to have someone here in the building watching them, uh, every thirty minutes. Uh, a third officer or booking officer. So the, we would always have someone here, here for booking. We have a two officer mandatory for, for booking, and that would leave someone, uh, a third person to be out on, on patrol while someone's, while they're dealing with a person i- in the station. Uh, responding to additional calls for service, uh, when, when the patrol is tied up for an extended period of time. And then it's a bunch of administrative tasks, grants, core information, uh, reports for public records requests. And I just want to point out, our records access, this, this is becoming sort of an issue. Our records access officer, she works the midnight shift, two hours a minimum on average every shift she's in the station. That's ten hours a week. Uh, uh, handling public records requests and getting those out on a timely basis. So in short order, uh, we much more versatile to have a police officer to be able to fill the needs of lobby as well as other variety tasks, rather than be called back to the station, uh, if they're out on the road. And if we feel this adds a natural cost-effectiveness where one position fills and fills the needs of post. And going back to our, our adult arrest, so twenty nineteen, we had twenty-eight, twenty twenty, we had twenty-two, twenty-one, we had, uh, forty-six, and twenty twenty-two, we actually had sixty-five, uh, sixty-five adult arrests. And what I see, the, uh, the factor is that is we've increased our traffic enforcement and our OU operating under the influence arrests are, I've gone from six in nineteen, five in twenty, twenty-one, thirteen, and twenty-seven in twenty-two. So that's where the increase is coming from. So police officer versus clerk comparisons, uh, as, as we continue, all the full-time police officers are currently EMTs. It should be noted that there have been initial discussions with the possibility of police officers becoming certified as, as call firefighters. Greg and I had a meeting with the, with the union yesterday. They're open to that discussion. Uh, to be, uh, willing to, uh, assist the fire chief and his staff with at least operating the ambulance uh, or additional manpower at, uh, you know, large emergencies. And like I said, there's some interest among the, the full-time police ranks, uh, but more discussion and more negotiation within unions are, are going to be necessary. Uh, having additional police personnel opposed us to surveillance will allow this discussion to continue to, and also alleviate some of our staffing concerns. There is some numbers, we, we kind of, Dr. Lou kind of broke this down. Uh, the costs, cost analysis versus a police are hiring two, two more police officers versus, uh, clerks. So we figured we have to have four full-time clerks plus three part-time clerks, uh, uh, to staff the lobby. Uh, and we'd only need to hire probably two more, uh, full-time officers. So the cost difference is, is broken down, uh, for you right there. So, you know, total estimated cost savings between the two is about a hundred and seventy-eight, uh, thousand dollars, anything change. So this next slide is, uh, a continuation of our two minimum, two officer minimums, uh, staffing analysis and how we would, uh, how many officers we, we would need. So highlighted in, in yellow. So if this is like the, the gold standard, i- and we're not asking for the, for the, for the gold standard, because I think in the slides coming up, we can show that we can handle, uh, the, the lobby with, with only a, uh, basically two, two additional full-time people. So if you, if, if you wanted to do the, the gold standard, it basically, it, it shows us, uh, we take these same, same numbers, uh, we would need seventeen full-time people. And, and that's kind of not what we're asking for, because we understand there's additional staffing needs, uh, you know, needed here in, in town, in, in public safety. So with the additional two officers, it would bring an overall patrol staff to fourteen officers. As I stated earlier, we've been able to develop working with, uh, Lieutenant McCoy and Sergeant Lou for a schedule using this staffing increase that guarantees a police officer at least sixteen hours a day. And I think that was the recommendation of the finance committee when we were talking about regional dispatch, that at least we would have the lobby staff sixteen hours a day. And, uh, occasionally, uh, we could probably staff the twenty-four hours a, a day, but this will guarantee someone here sixteen. Uh, law, like I said, is not the gold standard of seventeen officers as, as we outlined. But the schedule will meet the needs of patrol and with the lobby, while at the same time offering a significant reduction in, uh, overtime. So this is the sort of the schedule that, that, that we developed. So, on the eight to four is in the middle, the four to twelve is, is, is on the bottom. It basically allows, uh, the need not to backfill if someone's on, on, on vacation or someone calls in sick. And we would run the, uh, the midnight shift short with the, with the safe lobby. However, and this is something that we talked about with the, the patrol union, we would have, the, the two new people would theoretically be a floater, something sort of the way the fire department works it. And again, that would have to be a kind of negotiated with the union that we, if we knew someone was on vacation on the midnight shift, then we would take that extra person on the four to twelve or the day shift and plug them in, into the midnight shift. So basically, the, the two junior patrolmen would be this floater position. And this, this staffing model does not include uh, the school resource officer, which we're reimbursed every year from, uh, from the school. And this, so that theoretically, we were thinking that school resource officer in the summertime uh, would be forty hours a week assigned to the harbor master's department. So you have a police officer actually on the water forty hours a, a week. And then we have, uh, one part-time officer who is retired, who came here from the mass environmental police who would augment the weekends, and we would have two, actually be able to have two officers, uh, on the boat in, in the high, high-profile times. So the new schedule benefits, the schedule on the previous slide pretty much allows for a sharp decrease in overtime as adequate coverage now exists on nearly all the eight to four and four to twelve shifts, and would not, like I said, not require any, any, uh, overtime for contractual time off. The schedule allows us to fill various duties such as prisoner transport, suicide watch, court overtime, training days and coverage of major incidents, all of which now cost us overtime. The float position has flexibility and has potential to be utilized to perform duties, uh, on some days, as such as community policing. We could even, you know, I know there's a lot of, uh, complaints about speeding, so there's, there's our dedicated, we could have a dedicated traffic enforcement vehicle at least, you know, sixteen hours a day. And it provides coverage for our, our detectives. Um, I have a breakdown of, of, I did a, an analysis of how many hours and how much, uh, uh, time that he's, he, he does a dual role. He's, he's, uh, patrol and then he handles any calls that, that, that come in that need to be investigated. And, uh, he, he's done, the month of January, he did about fifty-two hours of, uh, caseload work and, uh, on, on, you know, on top of his, uh, uh, patrol duties. Uh, so, you know, all that comes without, without any, any overtime need. Uh, the schedule resulted in a decrease in large forced overtime, which the main thing we should be concerned about here is our officer, uh, well-being and, and emotional health. Um, and, and, you know, it would, they would definitely reduce on some of the forced shifts. So all above benefits will still, uh, help us staff the lobby with a qualified police officer. So here's some, here's, here's some numbers, and then when we, when we looked at our overtime, it was, it was a little shocking. So on, and the, the last three years, we have an average of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year on, on overtime. The average contractual time off per police officer is five hundred and thirty-six hours. So the cost to fill those hours with OT due to the limitation, the elimination of a reserve and an average overtime rate is about fifty-eight dollars an hour. So you take that, that five hundred and thirty-six hours times fifty-eight dollars an hour, it gives you an average of about thirty-one thousand dollars per officer per year, if that was uh, covered on, uh, overtime. And, uh, you know, with the elimination of, of, of the reserves. So you take that and times that by twelve officers, that's three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of where our overtime should be without reserves. And if we look at Coha, I've, I've taken a look at, uh, Cohasset's budget, who is very similar to us, and that's about where they are on overtime. So this is, like I said, the, the anticipated yearly cost of overtime, once, once the reserves eliminate, are, are eliminated, and all openings will need to go to overtime. It's all about, al- almost doubles our yearly average. So with the adoption of the staffing changes, with two additional offices and a new schedule, all our time off can be covered without the need for, for overtime. We figured it would be about sixteen hundred and eight hours, so about three officers that we'd have to budget for overtime uh, with this new staffing model. So you times that by fifty-eight dollars an hour, which our average overtime is about ninety-three thousand dollars. Our current overtime line on is about sixty-five, and we have a reserve staff budget of about a hundred and ten. To add those together, it's combined about one, one seventy-five uh, in, in, in overtime and obviously a reserve budget. So one seventy-five minus the nine, ninety-three thousand gives us a sort of a surplus of about eighty-one thousand seven thirty-six in overtime uh, in reserve money. So if you add the surplus with the estimated cost savings versus civilian clerks on the front, so the eighty-one thousand plus the one seventy-eight gives you an annual savings of about two hundred and sixty thousand two twenty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Now, this is all, uh, all, uh, approximate, so it may be off, you know, obviously a few thousand dollars. So the fa- following slides will show a little bit of a brief comparison of the towns that I took a look at. Now, I was asked to look at, like, Wyndham and Hamilton and Ipswich. Well, Ipswich is a lot bigger than us. They, they do have a harbor department. Uh, Hamilton has the train and, uh, one, uh, one A going through it. They don't have a boat, a harbor with fifteen hundred moorings. Uh, and they don't have two major highways running through it. Rockport sign kind of has one twenty-seven, one twenty-seven A running through it, but, but they, they have a harbor and a, and a high, uh, influx of people coming to the town in summertime. Cohasset's pretty much the closest to us. And as, as, as you can see here, uh, our current budgeted full-time staff, we have, uh, fourteen people, so it's twelve on patrol. Uh, we have one chief, one lieutenant, three sergeants, and nine full-time officers. And out of the three, we are the, are the lowest. Uh, Rockport has eighteen, they have sixteen for, eighteen full-time people, sixteen for patrol. And Cohasset's kind of where we want to be. So they have seventeen total, but they have fourteen assigned to, uh, patrol. This is our calls, calls for service compared to Rockwood and Cohasset. And as you can see, Manchester, besides twenty twenty, is, is the highest out of the three. Uh, why? I, I, I don't know that, but that was, that was the breakdown that, that came down with, with similar to Cohasset, but we are still higher. Our overall, uh, personnel and, and expense costs, and you'll see Cohasset's over, uh, three and a half million. But that three and a half million, and why that's so high is because they don't use reserves, and every contractual piece of overtime, uh, uh, time off goes to overtime. Uh, read, uh, Rockwood, pretty much, uh, they, they do have, have some, some reserves, but again, they are windows, just like we are. And the walk-ins to the, to the police station, like I said earlier, we're, we're the highest out of the three. And all, uh, both the chiefs that I spoke to, uh, said that, that pretty much the same thing. People like to come into the station rather than the police going to their house. Uh, I was trying to get the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two num, uh, excuse me, the twenty twenty-two budget numbers, but I didn't want to bother the Cohasset chief, because I think he's got a lot going on at this moment. So some key takeaways to this whole thing. So the towns desire to cover our lobby sixteen hours a day. Uh, Manchester has a much higher walk-in volume than the other communities that we looked at. The schedule that I proposed would cover the lobby sixteen hours a day with little need, if any, for overtime on eight to four and four to twelve, the backfill. Uh, we see a significant reduce overall in overtime. And, and, you know, what I want to reiterate here is, is this police reform, it, it, it's, it's coming and it's here. You know, we originally thought we were going to have till the January first of twenty twenty-seven, but at the end of this month, I'm going to have three reserves left, and then all three are going to be uh, part-time o- o- officers that have retired from other jobs. So, uh, they're going to be limited in what they can give us. Uh, our calls for service have increased, and like I said, the common theme from the other chiefs that are involved in regional dispatch, so Essex, uh, one of the main problems is officers are far, called back to the station, you take a report, are too often, which takes them away from their duties on patrol. So in conclusion, as we know, the, the Manchester Police Department is in a transition period on a number of levels, such as, uh, going into regional dispatch, police reform is the major one, and changes to what society demands, uh, with us overall. And, and I just, with that, like I said, our records access officer has, uh, two hours of a shift every single time dealing with public records. Uh, we have other officers, Officer Mashanes, our accreditation officer, so sometimes we have to pull him off of his patrol duties just to maintain our accreditation. Um, so our call volume is up and offices, like I said, are juggling more responsibilities and training, training requirements than they ever have. Uh, additional staff now always maintain, uh, we want to maintain the high-quality service that, that we have provided for the town and, and, and our citizens and people that visit, but also steer us away from the antiquated nineteen seventies model of a two-officer minimum on the street. Uh, so in closing, I think this presentation has given us a viable option on, on a number of levels. I think it's given us the option of uh, helping buy on with some staffing issues, maybe helping the fire chief with some staffing issues, and, uh, staffing our lobby and moving away from the, uh, two-officer minimum. Uh, like I said, and this is, this is, this police reform, it has pretty much forced our hand to make this change. So. But that, that's all I have at the moment. But that, that's all I have at the moment.
Well, good evening, folks, thank you for letting me present tonight. I did want to ask first off, I did send out um, two video links and a newspaper article link or magazine article, I just want to make sure everybody got those and had a chance to look at it to give you a little bit of uh, background from a couple of other sources. Um, so this, I think, is the ultimate question, independent of the status of law enforcement or the harbor master. What level of fire protection and EMS services do you want to pay for here in Manchester by the city? That, that is the bottom line. Uh, presentation, this is the order of presentation. Um, so you can see where we're going, I gave you the handouts to have some of the more key pieces of uh, of numbers. So fire chief's responsibility, so it's my responsibility under NFPA fifteen hundred. That I maintain written policies, that I establish membership roles and responsibilities, functions, oversee emergency operations, training, uh, set the minimum number of members to require to perform each function and the manner in which the function is to be performed in accordance with NFPA seventeen-ten. And the number and types of apparatus and the number of personnel that can be dispatched, the different types of incidents. Our mission statement, pretty basic, prevent and suppress fires, educate and rescue citizens, provide emergency medical services and hazardous materials response, promote public safety and foster community relations. Fire department is referred to as an all-hazard agency. We're the folks everybody calls when they have no idea who else to call. And if we can't solve the problem, we usually know who can and can get them there for them. So these are our calls for service for twenty twenty-two. Uh, fourteen twenty-five, our total for last year was fourteen twenty-four. So we're running uh, pretty close to numbers. Um, service calls are pretty big, false alarms are pretty big. A lot of inspections and permit work that we do. Uh, the number of fires overall was up from last year. EMS calls are around the same. Mutual aid has been a serious issue throughout Essex County as well as across the country. Um, with pay scales, a lot of the paramedics and EMTs after COVID have left the profession and retired. There's not many people wanting to get into EMS, it's a significant commitment, the hours are lousy. Uh, if you work for some of the private services, the pay are lousy. Uh, a lot of the private service paramedics have jumped to fire departments, leaving a gap with the private services that have um, contracts with some of the larger communities in this area. And that means when the private service is not able to handle those emergency calls in the larger cities, they rely on us for mutual aid. So as you can see, we've needed mutual aid ten times, but we've given forty. And this is as of September, and I know those numbers have gone up in October, November, December. There are times our ambulance has run two and three subsequent calls in one community. So anytime our ambulance is out of town, we do not have an ambulance in town to protect or transport any of our residents to the hospital, and that's part of our overall issue. So staffing needs. Some of this you have heard before, and I don't mean to be redundant, but it is still the same. We're shooting to achieve four-person per duty shift staffing. And that meets the OSHA mandate of two in, two out the majority of the time. That means when we have four on, we can get them to the scene. That allows us to make a rescue right away because we have two people that can go in and two outside to rescue them if they get in trouble. Right now, we don't meet that at all. Four-person staffing allows us for simultaneous fire and EMS calls, right now with a staffing of three. Two are out on the ambulance, it leaves one person behind. Which isn't enough to run a spare ambulance if we happen to have one, but they go to scene and then we have to wait for an out-of-town ambulance. It will help to reduce overtime, because if we have four on shift and one person is out, we maintain a three-person minimum. Right now, if we're at a three-person minimum and one person is out, we have to hire overtime to bring somebody else back. And that's created a problem because we lost two long-time employees this past year with Captain Biggar and Lieutenant Herrendine. And the firefighters that we have hired to replace them have not yet been able to go to the fire academy. Because the state fire academy uh, cannot keep up with the amount of hiring that's going on, similar that's happening in the police department. It's a scramble to find public safety people. Uh, we have them, but they haven't been able to go to the academy, so without that training and certification, they can't fully fulfill the role that a current full-time firefighter does. And based on three-person staffing, we're only able to handle one minor medical aid call or motor vehicle accident or one small room and content house fire before we need to rely heavily upon mutual aid. The second part that we're trying to achieve in a new staffing plan is create a rank structure that allows for succession planning. As you well know, I am one chief in a long line of many that have come to the department from the outside. Part of that is because we don't have a number two person in the administrative role such as Lieutenant McCoy is able to fill in for the police department on the fire side. All the administrative part relies on the chief's position. And then it's the on-duty shift to do the day-to-day calls. So we're looking to get eventually a number two, an assistant chief or a deputy chief. They would help oversee daily operations, they would take over fire prevention and inspection responsibilities and oversee training. They'd be involved with strategic planning and budgeting, as well as learning my duties and responsibilities. Right now, the shift officers, the lieutenants have enough with dealing with checking the apparatus, doing daily training and running emergency calls, that they don't have the ability to be in my office and learn my roles and know what a fire chief does. Um, and they could serve on a, as a fourth firefighter on duty, since they would be Monday through Friday. So if one of those four firefighters is out on leave, the deputy chief would still be there to fill in and help us meet the two in, two out, without having to hire a firefighter on overtime. The third area that would be fulfilled by this person would be to fulfill the ongoing fire prevention, education, inspection and permitting requirements. They would be able to maintain consistency because they're here Monday through Friday. Previously, these duties were on a shift captain who worked two shifts out of every eight. So you can't keep a, a good community presence, you can't keep up with dealing with the business owners and the homeowners on a day-to-day basis. And follow-up is very difficult, a lot of times we go out and do an inspection, we find violations and then we have to come back and inspect again. It's very difficult when you're on a shift schedule. They would also be able to build out our online permitting process, work on proposed ordinances and training the staff. Reporting statistics to the fire marshal office, conduct fire investigations and do plans reviews. Now currently, there's only one person in the department qualified to do plans reviews, and that's me. Only one of our permits is the open burning permit is online. The rest is because we have to create the permit and somebody has to do all the data entry to set up all the permits online, like the building department has. Uh, we do not have any firefighters currently qualified as a fire prevention officer one and two. These duties for years had been covered by Captain Biggar and Lieutenant Herrendine. When they both retired, there was nobody trained up to take on their role. And we currently, due, due to the time required for training and shift duties, don't have any public educators in the school. We're not teaching the kids how to draw fire safety plans, we're not talking, teaching them how to stop, drop and roll, and we're not teaching them how to get out of their house. Similarly, we're not out teaching the elderly how not to have cooking fires, how not to slip and trip and fall, which is a big number of calls that we go on. But these would be the responsibility of the number two person, the deputy chief, and they would be able to maintain consistency. Some of the other benefits of the four firefighters on duty, immediately available for second due calls or station coverage when the ambulance is transported. We can no longer rely on the call firefighters because they are, they are gone, that element of the department has been eliminated. And we can't rely on off-duty full-time members coming back to cover the station. If, if I am correct, we only have two members that actually still live in town. And the last six hires have all been firefighters that live in the state of New Hampshire. They can come back and cover regular overtime, but they cannot come back and get to the station in time for emergency callback. If we have four firefighters, it allows three firefighters to respond in the engine and one to respond in the ladder to all fire calls. This is more in keeping with that the larger local communities usually have two engines and a ladder responding to fire calls on normal operations. Towns like Beverly, towns like, cities like Gloucester or Beverly. And if you note, in twenty twenty-two, we had fifty-five overlapping emergency calls for service, requiring the three people on duty to be in two locations and two emergencies at the same time. Which means two can go to one, but that only leaves one at the other. And motor vehicle accidents, which we do a lot of, um, this gives us staffing to have an incident commander who's going to maintain safety, the vehicle to block traffic, so we're operating in a safe zone, and a crew to both provide patient care as well as stabilizing and extricating the patient. Right now, if we have any sort of rollover or anybody in trap, it's requiring us calling mutual aid, fire and ambulance from other communities right, right at the get-go. Also, if you look at these, the National Institute of Standard Technologies, they've done extensive testing along with the FDNY, New York City Fire Department. Three-member crews took twelve minutes longer than crews of four. Four-person crews were able to complete twenty-two essential firefighting rescue tasks thirty percent faster than two-person crews and twenty-five percent faster than three-person crew. These are the critical jobs that we perform at fire scenes. Ventilation, stretching a hose line, getting the water on the fire, making rescues. It also affects our ISO rating, which is the insurance rating, which are, affects the fire insurance rating in town. They look at how many people are initially on staff responding on the initial calls. And if you look, two thousand and four was the last true staffing increase we had in the department, when we went from two firefighters per shift to three. Now however, note that the floater positions, which, one of which we had and one, a new one that we were provided with next year, does nothing to increase our on-duty staffing. Those folks are to cover overtime when we drop from three to two and fill in the gap. We do not, they are not able to be used because of the amount of hours they need to be worked to be the fourth person on shift. So they don't help our efficiency or our capabilities at all, all they do is reduce our overtime expenditures. This is what NFPA seventeen-ten has listed as a standard of what needs to be on scene in the first eight to ten minutes. Seventeen firefighters, three engines, an incident command and a ladder truck. And these are how the crews are dispersed. A fire attack crew, a ventilation crew, a search and rescue crew, a RIT team standing by, an incident commander running the scene. This is what we currently show up with when we have three on duty and I'm working. One incident commander, one engine, one pump operator and two people on a hose line. So it falls far short, so all the other places there where you see X's, those are all the locations and the personnel we need to rely on mutual aid for. Provided mutual aid is available, not unlike the chief said that we reach out, but Gloucester's busy, Beverly is busy. So those are our big partners that we rely on and they are not always available to respond. Smaller communities like Essex, when we call for help, they have to tone it out, they have to get to the station, they have to get in the trucks, and then there's travel time for Essex. Where it's very similar for Hamilton and Wyndham. The survivability in two in, two out. Without four personnel on scene, which is gained by our four-person shift staffing, the initial companies, the on-duty shift, the likelihood of them performing a successful rescue with the, the time and the size of Manchester homes is highly unlikely unless we're operating at four. And where I drew the yellow line, that's four minutes, that's our average response time on scene. We're almost at the point that anybody still in there is not going to be viable. And if you look at the eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, when our mutual aid units are arriving, if anybody is in there, the building has already flashed over and it would not be able to be rescued at that point, that would be a body recovery at the end of the fire. Because it would be too, it would jeopardize the safety of the firefighters too much to go in at that point. So time is against us, fire growth is against us, and the amount of people we can put on the scene in the first four to eight minutes, not unlike getting on scene for a heart attack, determines how the rest of the fire goes. We can strike second and third alarms and get a hundred firefighters here in an hour, but by then, no one's going to be rescued and it's highly unlikely we're going to save the structure. This is what our current organizational chart looks like. We have four groups, each headed by a lieutenant. Group two has two full-time firefighters. Group one has two full-time firefighters, we did have a probationary firefighter leave. One of the three that we hired, so we have a hiring process going right now to replace him. Our group three has two firefighters and a probationary firefighter who right now is acting as an extra because they have not yet been fully trained. And on group four, we really have one firefighter and we're running one open position, so we have a lieutenant and one firefighter and that other probationary firefighter is also an extra. So we're very short in that respect. So what I'm considering is a three-year phased-in staffing plan. Now, this is recognizing that there hasn't really been a willingness to discuss or to commit to increasing staffing with a, trying to get a safer grant. I'm proposing the following. We hire one new firefighter a year for the next two years, fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. That means all four of our shifts will go to four firefighter paramedics on each. The estimated cost for each of those new positions is a hundred thousand dollars a year, including benefits. In year three, fiscal year twenty-six, we hire one assistant or deputy fire chief, that would be a new position. We'll allow a designated second in command. We'll take care of all the fire prevention needs, can be the fourth on duty if one guy is out sick. The estimated cost, and they would be administrative salaried, not unlike myself. The estimated cost, and they would be administrative salaried, not unlike myself. Um, and they would be, uh, the estimated cost would be about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year, including benefits. And note that several previous independent studies that the town commissioned and paid for, the MRI study in two thousand and nine and twenty fifteen. Had recommended using the safer grant process, but the goal was to increase staffing to four firefighters on each shift. And again, that's from two independent studies done. This is what the new org chart would look with the three-year phased-in staffing additions. Myself, the assistant chief, the recognized number two. Four groups of four. And that would, that would fill out the chart. So an officer and three firefighter paramedics on each ship. So this is a statewide comparison of departments that are similar to ours. Either in population, number of calls a year and or volume. I tried to highlight the ones primarily that don't have any call firefighters that are, that are similar to us. And I'll go on to a couple of other charts because you should have this in yours. This is a breakdown of all of Essex County. There are no two fire departments in Essex County that operate the same way. Under the same model or with the same people. Some have call departments, some don't, some run ambulances, some don't. Some have private contracted ambulances. Some rely heavily on a call force, some are all caller volunteer, uh, like Essex and Rockport. So these are the most applicable departments that I picked on this next slide. Based on overall Middleton in Essex County operates the closest to us, even though they're a little bit larger. All the ones I showed here operate paramedic ambulances except for Ipswich that has a contract ambulance. And I tried to work out the cost per person as you asked for, but every one of these departments budgets differently. Some include capital, some don't. Some have enterprise funds to replace their ambulances, some don't. Some do lease purchase for apparatus, some save it up and buy it upright, and some don't use their capital costs in their final annual budget number. So Middleton, which is the closest to us, the cost per person is two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Barnstable, which has two thousand people less than us, but a similar call volume. They have four on duty. They have a budget that's a million dollars more than us, and they're paying seven hundred and fourteen dollars a person for their firefighter. Cohasset, which the town has used and also Chief Fitzgerald. Um, a higher population, a few more calls, they have six on duty, twenty-six full-timers. And their budget is also a million dollars. They're paying three hundred and thirteen dollars a person. And I put Ipswich in there, even though a significantly higher population. They do not run the ambulance. Yet they're able to have four full-time firefighters plus an inspector on duty every day. And they don't even run an ambulance and their budget is half a million dollars more than us. And because of the number of residents, their cost is only a hundred and forty-six dollars per person. In Manchester, under our current situation, we're paying two hundred and seventy-seven dollars a person. So we're almost in keeping Middleton. We're way under what Barnstable's paying. We're under what Cohasset is paying. But we're not equal to Ipswich. Want to point out, these are some of the revenues that the fire department brings in from ambulance transport permit fees and inspections. Historically, going back to twenty eighteen, by the end of the actual fiscal year, we're up around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next page shows the grants that we've received since twenty twenty. A hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars worth of grants that we've been able to get at the fire department to assist us in our operations with necessary firefighting and safety equipment. And also I want to point out the estimated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the number that's been tossed around. That in theory is a savings in the public safety budget for moving dispatch service up to the North Shore Regional nine-one-one. So again, I return to the ultimate question. Is what level of fire protection and EMS services do you want to pay for here in Manchester by the seat? Thank you.
Greg, you sent us a memo this afternoon that was trying to pull all this information together for us. And I'm wondering if at this point it makes sense to kind of go through that a little bit.
So really, it was summary of what you just heard.
Right.
Um, so on the, on the harbor side, um, significant new demands of things of border traffic. And, uh, over the past few years, we've tried to in, increase on water patrol, part-time people. Also, you know, not always successful in, in doing that. My request, a minimum would be a full-time deputy for the summer season. And I think a way to provide that, a creative way to provide that is by taking that, um, that's a real position which is not committed to the schools during the summertime. And either that person or someone else that, that's where we'll backfill is the other person. Anyways, you would, you would devote a forty-hour position as, as, as Chief Fitzgerald indicated. So as a, as an interim step, I think that's a very positive step forward and a cost-effective way. Supplying that, filling that. So, uh, then you have both fire and police asking for additional staff. You know, it would be a real challenge to, to do both. Literally. Lots, lots of questions that we'll get into, but, um, I, I think. You know, you hear the, if clearly his presentation. In order to fulfill that, you, you need to always backfill. But you say we drop down to three, but I think if we're going to go to four, then there's going to be real pressure to always backfill. So I think realistically, over time, we're looking at twenty twenty-two. Right, as a full-time.
Well, you're talking about additional people to backfill because that's the problem we ran into with the staffing shortage. There isn't enough over the minimum to, I see what you're saying.
Well, I think the real number is probably twenty twenty-two in that range. Um, if you're going to achieve what you're hoping to do, which is always one.
Twenty to twenty-two as compared to?
As compared to eighteen. You would need, you probably need four floaters. In the back four, sixteen people.
I think we figured it out that if we did do four and drop them to three, we have four at least forty percent of the time, if not more, depending upon how much we improve them.
My, my point is
Yes.
That, that means that you're short sixty percent of the power and if your logic yeah, you would, I understand the logic.
Yep.
Um, it's, it's for that, that guarantee four on in order to provide those services. Then I think there's going to be real pressure to go to that. Yeah, I'm not saying that as a negative, that's just reality in order to keep that service at that level. So the way I look at it is that both, both departments, both fire and police have, have suffered from a loss of a force. On, on the fire side, we've lost the call force. On, on the police side, we have lost the reserves. Um, and I keep, I keep, um, sniffing and scratching and trying to figure out a way to get some, um, higher bang for the buck. And I, I think the the best model we have for that higher bang for the buck is to do something that, that Chief Fitzgerald has proposed. Um, it, it won't put a person in the fire station twenty-four seven. But I think if we can build up basically a new call force, that call force consists of uh, police officers, VPW, and perhaps we can reconstitute a handful of, of volunteers, residents, um, given the fact that we do see a change and who's staying at home these days, working from home, maybe, maybe, you know, it's remains to be seen.
Yeah.
Um, but from my mind, it's worth trying to reconstitute the call force through those three avenues. Through the police, through, uh, BPW, through a handful of citizens. I don't know if that will be successful. But I feel it's, I feel it's worth a try. And obviously, uh, you know, different choices can be made. But to me, that presents a more cost-effective way um, to provide services that that on a day-to-day basis are pretty rare. I, I understand perfectly the, the need for when that fire happens, that you want to have that kind of crew assemble. Um, fortunately, that doesn't happen very often in town. I, I hope I didn't just jinx us, but anyways, um, it's, it's again, it's a sort of a cost benefit in terms of how, how, how much of a risk do you want to take? And, and the chief is right, that ultimate question. Is very much what level of service do you want to provide guaranteed all the time? Uh, and there are, there's a pros and cons. There are always trade-offs. There are risks inherent in any staffing model. But from, from where I sit in terms of the bean counter and trying to, to manage budgets. Um, I think it's worth a try to reconstitute that call force in a, in a different manner. Using our, our paid staff and, and maybe supplement with a, a handful of, of what used to be the true volunteers. So that's, that's sort of my meat of the tea leaves here. But open to discussions and obviously ask, ask the questions and the new department in this year. Um, take, take the tires some more on this. And what other additional information might be helpful to you, we can certainly work to provide it.
Question, uh, so in the past, when we've talked about call, uh, one of the impediments to that along with just a, a general willingness of, of people to be interested in both themselves, uh, to the is, uh, is also the training requirement. And I was curious if in Rockport and Essex, do they follow the same training criteria, you know, that they're, you know, devoting four hundred plus hours?
Yeah, they, they send the people to the call volley academy when, when, when is available.
Right, so it's the same bar.
Yes, same, same call department.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Through the state fire academy. They offer a full-time recruit class with full-time firefighters. We definitely have to call them all on account. Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday.
Max, would you have a question?
Yeah, so Greg, so you kind of talked about Harbor Master Fires, didn't that result on police? Is what, from your summary?
So it would follow that proposal of going to fourteen patrol.
So an increase of?
Of two.
Two.
It does assume that, um, the officer on leave, that those dollars would stay. Even when that situation is resolved.
So two immediate or for our next budget year?
Right.
Not one plus one?
Not.
Yeah, okay.
I think for, for any of their considerations that we're looking at for, uh, changes to staffing, it would be helpful to you know, just run on, involve the budget model or what the impact would be, uh, to.
Right, so again, the numbers are fairly simple because it's, it's roughly a hundred thousand a person.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we're adding two officers to police, that's an additional two hundred thousand.
No, yeah, yeah, no, I get you.
Um, and it's, it's going from, from currently total of fourteen in the department, we're full of sixteen.
Right.
But I thought there would also be a reduction in overtime.
Yeah, offset. Correct, there would be a reduction that would offset.
And a reduction in dispatchers. I mean, we've kind of lost the entire, the dispatch budget has evaporated. Correct, in this budget and it, so it, it only seems fair that you're also crediting the dispatchers you've lost.
Yeah.
I mean, when you're talking savings because dispatch money has gone to other departments or for other purposes.
I guess that's what would be nice to see, kind of like a thirty thousand, right? I mean, if I'm understanding it all, it's kind of a zero dollars Harbor Master because of the school resource officer thing. Kind of disorder, or maybe a small number, I don't know. Kind of a zero for fire, given, right, what you said.
Well, then you get There would be costs if, if we try to reconstitute as long to call.
Okay.
So there would be some dollars there.
Smaller, I would.
Yes.
Yeah. So then you got the two hundred thousand roughly for two new police officers, right? But then on the saving side, is it like, do you, you know, minus three hundred because of the regional dispatch and then, and then is there another negative number because of overtime saves?
Yes.
So it'd be nice to see, right?
That we could summarize that.
Summarize that. I, I mean, it sounds like it comes out actually positive. I mean, if that's possible, but.
Yeah, I'm kind of hoping that we can kind of give Greg some direction and Andrea some direction so that they could come up with new public safety budget. So that we can look at it and see if it makes sense, but it doesn't make sense to do all the scenarios if we're not considering all of those scenarios.
Kathy Blata has her hand raised.
Kathy, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, um, I agree with Mike. We need to take this up a level and, um, understanding that this meeting is, like you said, Sarah, to give, uh, Greg and, and, um, and our town accountant some direction on how to proceed. A couple of things jump out at me when I listen to all three presentations. Number one, we, we've talked a lot about, uh, costs. We haven't talked about the other side of the equation, which is revenue. So when I hear, um, you know, the, the fire chief talk about how, you know, I guess I would say behind we are in some of our administrative work, uh, permitting, et cetera. Um, there's a couple of different ways to build capacity in an organization. One is to add staff, um, which can also, that's one way. Another way is to be more efficient, right? So, um, I do think some of the things we need to be looking at, if we haven't already done that, is uh, reducing the amount of, uh, manual administrative stuff. I'll say it that way, that our, uh, public safety professionals do, uh, whether it's through online systems or a self-service or whatever. Um, that's one item. The other comment I wanted to make was around revenue. Um, it's not, uh, clear, this is more of a question than a comment. The, the, uh, the permit fees that we charge, um, you know, when we, someone's building a house or a house changes hands and the fire department has to come and inspect the smoke detectors, et cetera, those permit fees, are they um, mandated by the state in some way, or do we have the freedom to, uh, look at our fee structure to see if we should be charging more for some of these things so that we could you know, gain some revenue perhaps to fund some of these, uh, additional positions. Um, so those are my two. So those are my two comments. I have others, but I'll stop there for now.
Chief, do you know on the fire, on the.
They're not, they're not regulated there and we, we raised all the fees a year and a half ago. To what they are now. Because most of them were too low. And part of what she's talking about are the administrative things, we are losing revenue because. When we do plans review, if somebody comes in and gets the permit from us in the firehouse, we get a check for it. If we end up doing plans review on behalf of the building department for a building permit that goes through their online permitting system. They don't collect that fee for us and we don't get that fee, but we're still providing. The service of the plans review, and that's why I talked about the slide about us losing revenue. Because we need someone to administrate and get our permits online and someone to be able to oversee that as part of their regular duties. So that is a place that we're losing revenue and we are losing it because the system hasn't been automated. But to get it automated requires personnel or time to set up the programs and the permits. And manage the system for us online. Which is just one of the jobs we don't have enough people to do.
But that, that to me sounds like something that probably should be handled by people in town hall, right?
What, what, where you could sign it up, you can pay a vendor to sign it up.
Yeah, so there is another.
It's a one-time cost, right?
Right, so that, that was my point. I mean, that, that was my day job, you know, taking a look at administrative stuff, automating it, it's, it's, it's very doable. I understand the challenges with that, chief, and if you, if you can make some of those changes in how we deliver the services. They are game-changing and can really free up capacity in your team. The other thing, I, I do think we should take another look at those fees. I mean, if someone's building a two million dollar house and. You know, we're charging them a hundred bucks or whatever it is to do the inspection, is that really the right fee structure? It just, I, I don't have any information on that, but I just feel it's something we should look at. And also what, I just wanted to follow up on what Mike said about the, the savings. I have asked for that to be documented. We, we need to be. Clear on how much, how much savings we are actually getting from dispatch, you know, a waterfall chart would be one way of showing that. And if, if Andrea needs some help with that, I'm happy to do that, but you know, we've got to show the puts and takes. When we, when we come back and discuss the budget, we've got to show where real savings are. And, and then we can make decisions about what, what we do with those savings. But some of the, the language we, we've heard tonight, they're not real savings, they are more cost avoidances. So I just think we need to get our language straight. We need to take credit for our savings, look at our revenue structure. And automate all of this, as much of these administrative tasks as we can. So that our public safety professionals can, can, you know, do their day job.
One question. So the, uh, just want to revisit. Two hundred thousand dollars that we're adding to. That's not the net cost. We, we still committed, somewhere we're committed to staffing the lobby.
That's the two hundred.
Well.
Okay.
So there are obviously, obviously options.
So, so the, what's the, the difference? I remember the slide is like sixty thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah, one seventy-eight, I believe. That's, that's kind of what we figured. We, we use you on the other side of the. Contract, yeah, the union contracts. So we, it's, it's, it's step one patrol and step one out of the. And that's what we compared. So, but basically we said we'd have to hire. To cover our lobby without police officers, four full-time people plus three part-time clerks, which is a total of about. Three hundred and one thousand a year. Hire two police officers. This, now, now this is just, this is just salary, it's not including benefits, it's about a hundred and twenty-three. So if you have the, the benefits on there as well, it, it would go on.
Explain why you can cover the lobby with two police officers, but need somebody more clear.
Because I will have the entire staff to be able to cover the lobby.
Okay.
Anne Hatta. Were you founding? The clerical at, as twenty-four seven or?
No, sixteen hours.
Sixteen, okay. So. I have, still having trouble figuring out how it needs, say, six people.
On a, on a four-two schedule, four days on, two days off, you need that number to cover. They're filling when.
But, but you can do that with two police officers.
Yeah, two additional police.
Two additional police.
So if you look at the schedule that, that we proposed.
I, I looked at it, I'm sorry, I can't, I, I, it's over there, I can't see it.
I sent, I sent the updated version to Greg, so he can send it to you. So on the, on the day shift, we would staff. Potentially four people at all times. So you would.
Is that for patrol people or for people altogether, including you and the lieutenant and the sergeant?
That, that's for patrol people. So when someone, theoretically, we've taken a day off, we would still have. A minimum of, of, of three, and we only allow one person off per ship at a time.
So end of the day, just theoretically, we added two new full-time police officers. That gets the lobby staff.
Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours a day, seven days a week with, with police officers. Okay.
So one of, one of the things that might be helpful to clarify is that even with today's staff, there are times when there are three hours.
Once in a while.
Right, so, so that's why you're able to, that's why you're able to do this. With fewer people would appear necessary, because you already have. Some staffing capability to have someone at the station. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Plus, in addition, it's the flexibility of you to use any officer as need be to staff. As opposed to if it was clerks, then you've got kind of two buckets of personnel.
It'd be just like if they're dispatching.
Yeah.
John? How, just like dispatch, when dispatch is twenty-four seven and this is sixteen?
Because we'd be using civilians instead of police officers.
Okay, I'm not, I'm still not following this, I'm sorry. The dispatch was about three hundred fifty thousand. And that was one person on all the time. Your estimate for the clerical solution is three hundred thousand for a third less hours.
Yeah, right, so, so we would. That's correct, sixteen hours.
Weren't you using reserve officers to fill in something to say?
Yeah, we reserve off. Every weekend, it's all reserve off. So basically, our, our full-time people are Monday through Friday, and when we had shortcomings, it was on, on the weekends. So with the six shifts on, on the weekends, and we would use either a part-time dispatcher, which we had three of them at one point. Now, well, well, as of the end of the month, we, we won't have any, or a reserve one.
And the other difference, so when you go to the four-two schedule, there are more days off, there's on, there's less hours worked on a minorized basis. So that increases the need for more coverage for those days off.
John?
Yeah, so. All of this is a tremendous amount of data that I'm trying to take in, it's kind of like drinking from a fire hose. I'll use the analogy. One thing that I, I don't see in a lot of the data and a lot of, you put up a lot of numbers with regard to number of calls, number of events, all of that sort of thing. Is it's not telling me necessarily the time of day. And I'm wondering if there's some sort of a trend with regard to when are the most intensive times when there's a lot of activity? Because I can see there certainly is a need for additional staffing in those times, but there may be times where not a whole lot is going on. And you don't have to go, say, go from, you know, have four people at those times, or necessarily have police officers say, in dispatch. At certain times, when frankly, there isn't anybody walking in, because who walks in at ten or eleven at night? Maybe I'm being presumptive, that does happen, but. From, from a police perspective, I can see that you certainly need more folks, even if. The stripping out the dispatch or anything, you're a twelve point four and you only got twelve people, so there's no question there. I do have a question about where the school resource officer goes during the summer right now. Okay, so she's, she's there, you would ship that with an additional officer, you would ship.
So she goes back to patrol now, basically covers our paid time off.
Okay, so she's back, back, back billing and, and, and that's, that's, that's sort of thing.
About, okay. We figure about ten, ten, ten weeks.
Right, well, a clerk is less expensive than a police officer, I think.
Not by much, no.
The other thing I think to consider is, you know, fully loaded, right? If, if a clerk, if a clerk is full-time, now you, you're adding in.
All right, well, I, I'm just wondering, there might be times where a clerk can handle this because there aren't as many problems. And maybe it's, you know, we, right now, we're at sixteen hours, so that's the assumption, maybe it can be twelve and four, you can do the math to see how that, that works out. But I'm looking down the road and saying, okay, right now we're at sixteen hours, but we're going to look at this dispatch thing almost every year. The sixteen hours make sense, or maybe does twelve make sense, or maybe does eight make sense? I don't know how that's all going to work out down the road. Right now, we're starting at, at sixteen, but we want to maintain some sort of flexibility longer term. For, for what might happen with, with all of that. And you mentioned online training? Is that, is, is that separate time?
That's for the bridge, bridge academy, yeah.
Oh, that's, that was the bridge academy. Okay, I was just wondering if, you know, if, if an officer is on dispatch and they have certain online. They do that now, I mean, it's not lost time. It's not time that's necessarily additive, they can do that, because there are a lot of things you can do. When you're, when you're sitting.
So, so with our annual in-service, we, we allow them at least an hour a shift to try and. Use that or, or do that now, that's forty hours, every single plus. You know, on top of the firearms training, which is that would be a person.
Well, I would be interested to know about the, kind of the time of day for all of these.
So I can kind of speak to that now, so, so our. Walk-ins on the overnight shift, when I looked at it, was about forty-seven. The, the day shift is the highest and four to twelve is the. That's kind of why we, kind of why we base the schedule the way we do.
Right.
Yeah, we put everything, it's part of the safe lobby on the overnight.
I, I understand certainly day would be, be most and maybe four to eight, but I'm wondering about like eight to twelve. I guess I would be.
I mean, for instance, the other night, we had a, a, a domestic situation, female walked into the station. That needed some serious, had some serious injuries, and that was at ten o'clock or twelve o'clock at night. So it's not injury like that, people walking.
Okay.
So is that directed to the fire department?
Yes, I, I would say many of these comments go both ways.
We, we have no idea.
Oh, you don't, you don't have data that.
Well, we would have data, but it, it's, it's hit or miss. It's, if you have the crystal ball, tell me, we, we want to be. Prepared at all times, like the other night, we, we didn't know we were going to Beverly for eight hours to help them with their structured fire. There was a call last week on a Sunday morning, I think, they went on four calls after midnight, between midnight and four AM. Then you could have a busy Monday and we have no calls. But we still have the potential for any call at any time, so we don't have the ability to up staff. Other than like the severe storms where we might expect wires down or. Car accidents because it's a blizzard or something like that, then we put on. Extra staff because the likelihood, because of all the circumstances are. But you could just as soon have a house fire or a heart attack at two o'clock on a Tuesday morning as you could seven o'clock on Friday.
Okay, I, I was just, on, on the ambulance side, your mutual aid was what, a couple of times a week? Ten, ten a month, was it? Was that it?
Forty, forty, forty up until September, and that doesn't include October, November, early month, December.
That's mutual aid given, mutual aid received.
No, that was, we, we only, they only came here ten times.
Right.
We went out.
I, I understood, understood, so you're, you're, you're short one way or the other.
And the ten times was without ambulance two running, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And that's September first, two thousand and one to September first, two thousand, two, two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty-one to twenty-two, September.
Yeah.
September, so it's a full year.
Yeah.
Can I ask, oh, let Maury go ahead.
I just had a question. Greg, I think your idea of thinking about police and fire is a really interesting one, but I also reflect back. We've had a bunch of issues, I think, over the years, where we've trained people. And trained them to a fairly high level, and then they move on to other communities, and I, I feel like we are the training academy or we're becoming that. How do we work that potentially? If we're trying to. Help police officers assist fire and training, what level of training do we think we're going to need? And how do we, how would we engineer that if we did it?
So they would need to go to the all-volunteer training. And we would, this is something to negotiate with the union, but.
Yeah.
Most likely we'll pay them for their training time.
Is that about, is that the four hundred hours? Level or something?
I have, I have to get the latest numbers from the state for that. I don't have that in any of the call volley academy. It's far less than the full-time academy.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I could be wrong, but I think that goes the good way, right? In, 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 in the sense that if we're hiring two new full-time blue jobs, right, let's just say. I mean, they're admitted, like, I mean, our, our turnover, I assume is not.
Well, I think we've solved the turnover problem in the last contract negotiations with the education incentive, and I don't think you're going to see that as much anymore. So now the officers, like other contractors, get the full education incentive, not with part of the driver to make. So someone could go to Beverly per, per se with a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar increase in their base salary.
So that's, so that's gone.
I think we've solved that, if you agree, right?
Yes, it seems to, yes, I would agree.
So if you have that, and now full-time police officers are cross-trained as call firefighters.
Well, and they have the opportunity to get paid more.
Is there any upper, is there? Any reimbursement if we train some paper, somebody's training, and then they leave within a certain amount of time?
Right, you can, you can try that, it's hard to get that money. But, so, yeah, in another community, we had new hires signing contracts, and I knew within three years I paid back. The community, I, I forget the number we have, was five thousand or eight thousand dollars.
We, we kind of have that in place for the full-time academy. It's prorated, we've kind of developed the, the procedure for it, and we have it as an opportunity to use it. But again, like, I think like Rick said, if someone were to push it, it's very difficult to. And if you did it on a call department, where people are looking at it either as a hobby or volunteer after the full-time. No one's going to sign a contract to come in to do their hobby.
Right.
If they got hard time work, they jeopardize them giving you all the money back if it don't work out. It takes at least six months for. For them to get fully trained through the academy, and then it would probably take another six months for them to get acclimated. So you really don't get full use out of them for a year. Plus, if you don't have the gear that fits, you have to buy them the compliant gear, and that's about thirty-five hundred dollar firefighter. If we already have it in stock in order to outfit them. So you could be paying them to go to the academy, have them on your books for a year. Pay somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars for them, and them not work out. A week later, and you've wasted all that energy, time, training, and you're no better off than when you started. And that was one of the reasons that led us to dissolving the call department, because it's okay. Like I said, we can use mutual aid and have a hundred people there in an hour. Where we need the people is going out the door on the trucks in the first ten minutes. Which is not how the call department operates, because they need to respond to the station and then respond out on the truck. If all three of our guys are going on the truck, they're not leaving until the full-timers come back. And the citizen on the trucks, and so they're fully turning on operating on the apparatus as well.
Um, I, I also wanted to ask Bayon, you had, you had. Mentioned the full-time deputy. Some buzz from, you know. What kind of training is involved with that? And, and if you have to have somebody who's going to have. Police officer training or, or even a police officer? How, how? How, how long would that take to implement?
So training is different. Uh, if you're hiring police department, uh, has, uh, Roger Thurlow now. And so, Roger Thurlow steps onto the boat fully trained. He is capable of doing anything that my deputies and I are able to do. Sergeant Newton is qualified to operate the boat now. Uh, and maybe in some very limited situations, do some towing, but there's training involved there. We were hiring just a straight-up Harvard Department deputy, we'd be hiring somebody with maritime skills already. So the enforcement piece is a large piece on weekends, it, it's a major piece of what we're doing. Also, remember, all the police officers are already in teams, so we have medical, we have the enforcement piece in place, but if we're hiring harbor masters, then we're hiring for maritime skills. That's, it's part of coming on board, you have to license, have some level of a maritime merchant, I mean, US Coast Guard certification, license.
So when you say you're, you're looking for one full-time deputy, is that full-time during certain parts of the year, or?
Well, so, the, the discussion with Chief Fitzgerald, uh, I've been gone on vacation, so there hasn't been a lot of time. This, the position, the forty-hour position, uh, and go a long, long way towards, uh, alleviating that summer, uh, stress, the impact, the need for more staff. So, after that discussion, I have to rethink a little bit. Does that staffing mean that I am better capable of doing the administrative piece, which suffers to a very uncomfortable degree for me during the summertime? And I, I, I think that that's a very good first step. Maybe the final step, we won't know until it's implemented, we've had it under our belts for season, but I do have to take a step back from the request for the year-round, full-time benefited deputy position. Although, uh, when it is time for me to think about retirement, I think that that position should be hired, at least a year. Uh, before I, to hire someone who's going to take over as harbor director, manager, master. And, uh, you get somebody who steps in ready to take the reins, and, uh, everyone here is familiar with, and not very familiar with you. And the expectations.
Could I, could I follow?
Hold on, just a minute, and. Your comparison. Mr. Pike. Your comparison numbers were interesting, but you were missing over that I'm very curious about. Which is how many hours with how many boats does each of those harbor masters patrol? Harbor master, harbor departments patrol? My anecdotal experience is when I come into Manchester on a weekend, I see almost always two boats, sometimes three. I don't remember going into any other harbor where I saw three boats running from the harbor, harbor department. Occasionally a harbor master, but.
So, we ran one boat for longest time. And then, uh, given the growth in transient day visitors to Long Beach, the ability to get east of the main harbor became nearly impossible. And I started release, receiving emails and phone calls from residents saying, you're not doing your job, you better start doing your job. And the only way to accomplish that was to get a second boat. So we got the second boat, there are times when, uh, on holidays in particular, Fourth of July, particularly when we had fireworks on the third, preferably on the fourth. I'll put, uh, three boats out there.
I'm just curious about Kingham and Hall in particular.
So, uh, the, the Hall Harbor Master is, been there a long time, he's, he's ready to leave because the department is so overwhelmingly understaffed, he puts in sixteen-hour days on weekends, all by himself. All by himself, which is totally unreasonable. They should have two boats, given the amount of traffic going between there and Hangum to, uh, the World Center, that's, that's a two-boat department. I put as many boats out there as I think. Need to, uh, manage the volume of traffic that we have. The, and two minimum, because that's what the residents have told me. They want, they want the coverage that requires two boats. I mean, Hall, Hall is a tough comparison. I talk with him a lot. We do work, we'll have two boats out. Uh, Salem, uh, has, have more boats than I can count. Most departments have at least two boats. If they're, if you go to a harbor and, and you don't see two boats out there, I, I don't know why, I don't, I don't work for those departments.
I, I just. You have contacts, and it sounds as if we have. Except for Salem, where can't tell.
Yeah, remember, we have east of Long Beach, which is now our busiest place in the harbor. Uh, we have another, uh, code that will have as many as a hundred boats at the same time as the other one has a couple hundred. Uh, and then we have White Beach and Black Beach, and all those residents along there are expecting a harbor department to, uh, spend some time up there. We have, with the second boat, been able to patrol, go up, uh, do the same things we do down in the main harbor. Uh, send a boat up there three times a day. And then be able to, uh, have a boat that can come into the harbor, back out. Then a boat can go back, because they do fade off a little bit, but the, the main, uh, place that we have a boat is Area Seven at the No Way. I will maintain until the day I die. The reason we have not had major incident at Long Beach yet, it's because we slow the boats down before they get in there. And when they're coming out, they see us sitting there waiting for them, and they don't go fast till they get to those No Way places. It's the, the speed that's, the only way that happens is to have that, uh, boat present. Got it? It's just like a police car, uh, on the side of the road, uh, doing a, a speed check. See the police car, you slow down. Fire, we go slow. You all slow down. I'm the one that's going slow in front of you, yes. So, we I see that as the most, uh, important thing that we do on busy weekends, to make it a safe harbor.
Thank you, that's very clear.
I hear a lot of change going on in what I think is the harbor operation, a lot more enforcement. Um, do you see the model changing in terms of becoming part of the police department as it is in many other communities?
What I see is, uh, the state mandating that harbor masters will have zero enforcement authority, zero. Do not even stop a boat, so, then, well, then, what do we need you out there for? So, given, uh, if, if this summer, Manchester Harbor Department had zero authority to enforce, that means all those boats that are zipping in and out there. Unless the, you fund the harbor, the police department with enough police officers to be on boats out there slowing people down. We're going to start having boats zipping all the way in, that horrible incident is one to happen. So, the enforcement piece, uh, when harbor masters no longer have the authorities, it's gonna be a huge, big deal for every single community. Manchester is taking first steps, really, really good ones, compared to almost any other community that I talked to that doesn't already have a police department, not even the harbor department.
It sounds like answers in, yes, in the medium term, like not in the short term, but yes, in the medium term.
So the post-commission hasn't really come down on like clamboardings, who are theoretically authorized, like a custodial, you know, of arrest. Anything under chapter ninety B is technically arrestable. So, they haven't really made a, a decision on it, and when, when the police reform was, was established and talked about, I think that was kind of overlooked, so we, we have been hearing, well, it's, they're gonna make a decision in April, they're gonna make a decision in, in June, that was all last, last summer. But the overall goal of this, uh, police reform, like I said, was to get everyone's training, who has the authority to make a custodial arrest, to be a, across the board the same. So that's why they're eliminating the, uh, uh, reserve officer. And so I think it's coming, however, you know, that's, we'll see when, we'll see when, yeah.
So there'd be an administrative element and an enforcement element, I mean, the, you see it going to a manager, I gather?
Uh, so, so when, when you think about your harbor masters, uh, rather than having, uh, to hire police officers who have maritime experience, or finding officers who are willing to get the maritime experience, you still have harbor masters. We can still drive boats, we still know how to tow boats, we still know how to get the water out of boats, we still can, uh, take fire departments out, put out fires. We can still provide, uh, rescue and, and medical training, and I maintain in those communities that are caught up in this, that don't have the staffing to do the level of enforcement that harbor masters are doing right now. These other services that harbor masters provide will be even more important.
I'm sorry, even more what?
More important.
Thank you.
I do have information, the, uh, call volley academy, the latest point is two hundred and forty hours of trade.
Bayon, I just had a question, um, the, the number of sort of incidents you've been involved with out there, how many would you say are sort of medical E M T type things versus how many are boating, you know, mariner towing? I'm, I'm sort of thinking about responsive, or skill sets, you know, uh, how does that kind of break down?
And so, uh, one thing to remember about Manchester is that we are the, uh, landing point for everything up on this end of Salem Sound, uh, sometimes even Baker's Island, for medicals coming to the yacht club. We've had some incidents with injuries, uh, we've had, uh, heart attacks, broken backs. A lot of these injuries come in, the vast majority are dealing with boats that are, uh, broken down on rocks. That's, there's more of that, uh, maybe trying to keep a boat from sinking. So, those are very specific skillset, it, that, uh, anyone can learn, anyone can become proficient at it. But if you're already a full-time police officer, dealing with all the training, and all the, the annual training you have to do, just keep your certification up. A lot of work. Uh, so, your, your harbor master is going to still provide those same vital needs out on the water. There's still gonna be the tow truck, even the fire truck. The boat still is the police car.
So can you sort of just, as a total wild guess, if you think of the season?
Yep.
You think you're looking at ten or twelve medical things and fifty towings off the muds, or do you have a sense of roughly what that ratio is?
So, I, I would guess medical is more like five percent. It's, it is small, and not all of it is coming right from Manchester. Sometimes those medicals are us clearing a pathway for the boat from the other community coming in to get the dog.
Beverly Harbor Master brings a lot of medical, yeah, in US, as well as closest.
Beverly brings the most, actually.
Chief Fitzgerald, um, you know, is the R A O function, is that necessarily a police officer versus car call, or?
Uh, well, the only reason, uh, our records access person is a police officer, and a, and a training as well. I'm using that skill set.
Good idea. To clarify, the, uh, we were showing data for some of the other communities that were listed as having two chiefs, is that a chief and a deputy?
Yes.
And currently, do you have a candidate for a deputy chief, or is that a higher?
No, that, I, the, the, the position doesn't exist within the orange chart or job description, so I would need to.
But is there somebody that's sort of on that track, or?
Um, not necessarily, that's part of the succession planning issue, the captain's position was always a step above the lieutenant's, but because their role was primary fire prevention. So they were captain because of the fire prevention officer certifications. So, since he, he, he left in a manner that wasn't predicted for retirement, it was not people planning to take over that role, the deputy chief's role would be above that. Then you would be looking for somebody that had ten, five to ten years as a chief officer with executive fire officer training. We don't have anybody, and that's part of the whole succession plan. Cuz right now, when you hit lieutenant, there's nowhere else to go but chief, but there's no step in between to train you how to be chief. So that gap's gonna be, continue to be there, so anytime a chief leaves, the only qualified person would be a chief from the outside coming in.
Got it.
So that's why it's a phased-in plan, so even new firefighters coming in can say, I wanna be chief some way, someday, and they have a path to get there in their own department. And that currently doesn't exist.
I have a question, and this applies to each department. There, there seems to be difficulty getting both qualified and desirable people. Um, so, even if, you know, it's, even if we were to say, okay, go hire all your people, are they out there?
Well, I can speak to that. Uh, so with legal, we had to establish a test and a list, and they haven't really come out and told us the guidelines of what type of tests that we were we, we spoke to them, so, so we partnered, who did we partner with? No, another department, in Essex, and, and Essex, on, on a, on a entry-level exam. Uh, so we pulled all our reserve officers at that point, and they took the exam, and so we, we rated them from one to two. I have three left on that list, that are, one of them is our next candidate. He's in the process of going to, uh, Raleigh as a reserve officer. They are having a full-time opening in, uh, what's that? Yeah, in February, but he's one of our people that we've bridged, we paid for his bridge training, and he's amassed the twenty-four hundred hours, so I could theoretically take him tomorrow, and make him a full-time, uh, police officer. And the, and, and the other one, uh, is, the next one's Chelsea, who's our full-time dispatcher. She's already reserve-trained, and we've done her medical, her background, her psychological, so we have a lot of money invested in, in these people uh, that we don't wanna lose, and also, uh, our third person that's left is David Kim, and he's in the transition phase to go to Rockwood, so we've already invested him, he's full-time academy-trained, and he's taking the first opportunity, which is Rockwood Company, first. So, after that, we would just establish a somehow, somehow, someone.
So again, though, are there, are there pools of people? Because I've, I've heard some interesting things about the types of people who are attending academies. And, um, and it's, it's.
And, yeah, you know, I, I, I totally, you know, agree, but that's why we split out this list for anyone to take, uh, this test or anyone. And, yeah, you know, I I I totally, you know, agree, but that's why we split out this list for anyone to take uh this test or anyone to take. They 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 pay for it themselves and then we we go through the background. Chuck and 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 we have to go by what post says and if they pass, then we bring them to the to the next level. But just with with that said, uh we just got a letter from the Boston Police Superintendent. Uh they're a critical staffing officer, so like I said, it's not just us. Uh they they sent that letter to the executive director of Mass Chiefs who forwarded to us and it's basically an apology letter. Because they can't find qualified candidates. And they're going to be taking lateral transfers from other cities and towns, so they're apologizing to the other cities and towns that are going to be paying. So with that said, it's just like establishing a list and then you just go down the list and you just keep going down the list. So we're we're lucky to have our people available right now, yeah. But they're they're probably not going to be there very long because they're going to get scooped from somewhere else.
And the one approved last year is he's going to come on in April.
He's in the academy right now.
Like when I was at the state of Maine and New Hampshire, also uh, but I've noticed that anyone who's completed the Massachusetts. Police training uh can come to those states and be hired immediately without having to go through the training in those states. And so if, one step further, if the post says Harbor Masters have no authority. The burden falls totally on the police department.
Yeah, on the fireside, so we have, we just, we're hiring to replace that one new firefighter that left. I have seven applications, we have two qualified paramedics on the list. Most of our qualified people are coming from referrals. And most of the paramedics we're getting are coming out of busy private EMS systems. Uh but we have for the first, well, the first time last time, we put it in a provision to bringing in people at the E M T basic level. Although the contract requires you be a paramedic. With the caveat that within the first two years, they need to pass the fire academy. And they need to get their paramedic certification on their diamond, on their time. So with the first one is to hopefully find somebody that's qualified, we're not finding people that have both fire training. Into paramedicine, but we can get paramedics and send them to the fire training. Um but we're getting a lot of people that have like one year experience as a basic E M T and then they're going to be. Have to go off to the paramedic with really no field experience. And then come back, but it's the same anywhere, it's the competition, um fire chiefs are now going to win. They do the CPAD exams for the physical agility test and they're standing outside. And when people come out that have passed, they're handing them applications to their departments, that's. That's how cutthroat it's getting, they're going to job fairs now, they're going to high school job fairs.
So it's basically the football combine.
Yep, it is and it and it's exclusive, it it's not exclusive to here, it's everywhere.
I heard of a police department in the North Shore offering like fifteen thousand signing bonus, it worked for them. Because they've got, they've got the money to fund the positions, but nobody to fill the positions. We're at least fortunate that we have a list of people. And this one, I'm glad you asked that question because I was going to make that point.
Any other questions, Byon, Monta?
I just had a curiosity question for the chief, Ipswich doesn't have an ambulance service, what, how how do they do that or what's happening there?
They have a they have a contract with Action Ambulance. So their engine still responds to the medical aid, but Action also responds and transports the patient and builds the patient, so.
So does Action have uh equipment on site in the firehouse?
Not in the firehouse, no, but they have a base in town, they're required by contract to keep at least one ambulance in there and then they backfill when that ambulance leaves the town.
It's kind of like boat like.
But they are having, they are having issues because all these private services are taking from Peter to paint Paul, so to speak, and covering and. There are times where they may have three trucks in the morning in one city. And when they need to call, there's no trucks left in the city because they've been sent everywhere else. I was talking to Chief LaCoste in Middleton this morning and um. Their call response to P V D has gone up four hundred and forty percent since last year of their ambulance going mutually aid to P V D. And that's because the private EMS contract with P V D can't make the benchmarks that they require it to under the contract. So it's affecting everybody, it's a domino chess game throughout all of Essex County in the North Shore.
I am.
Yeah, I guess the last, probably the last year, we've tried. Harbors around the state are experiencing overwhelming volume uh with voters, the pandemic. Massive number of votes, the big difference from my department is when there's an economic downturn. I probably see reduction in that, in our volumes. Eventually, I don't know when that's going to be, but Harbor Masters everywhere are are feeling. Exceptionally overwhelmed and. Just like uh recent fire.
Got a quick one, Chief Fitzgerald, you mentioned the number of arrests that kind of. Sounds like part of that is O U I.
Yeah, that's what it seems like to me and it's because, you know, we've had complaints about speeding, we've talked about it at. At nauseam with the uh at the meeting meetings and so we've increased our traffic enforcement and a byproduct of of that is. Our uh O U I arrests have increased, a- along with some other things like.
What's the others, domestic?
That's probably the other, the other major one, a lot of that is happened with the pandemic, people were in their houses for a long period of time. And relationships went awry and now all of a sudden there's an increase in crime from which everybody, we're feeling that here.
God, thanks.
So do we want to give great, you know, some type of direction from us, Greg?
I I will say that um. The assumption that I didn't explicitly state is that you do want some station coverage. So there are communities that don't provide station coverage, I came from a community where that worked very well. Um you know, safe lobby does work, it's it's a big change and I, people are leery of it, I understand that. But it it can work.
And certainly the finance committee voted on that quite some time ago. Recommended the sixteen hours and I think where we were coming from is. Community was so up at arms, why not start with something reasonable and it doesn't seem to be necessary. In time, it can be hatcheted down.
Yeah, I understand, that's why I I assume that that's what we needed to do. I guess I felt obligated to say, there are other choices. And and one of them would would simply go to the safe lobby and and that would free up some options.
I I think people like being able to go in and say, what time does the parade start? You know, but it's, but it's a small town thing and I I think that that. It it's, it's wanted.
We also uh add to that that we as a board have moved towards. The chief on the police aspect of it. And I think that personal uh personal touch is being able to walk into a lobby. Okay, I I think that uh. It's part of what we're looking for as a, as a community is uh a more of a police aspect of it.
So I don't want to speak out of turn or put the cart before the horse, but at a very high level, I I think, I think the plan's. Good, just subject to, I'd just like to see a high level, I don't know, I call it goes into, goes out as, right? You know, the savings and the cost and, but it seems like at a thirty thousand foot, it seems like it actually saves money and. It takes a lot of boxes, so.
Particularly in that choice, I mean, and what do we say and what's the sixteen hour dispatch kind of kind of cost?
Well, and I think what's cost of the all firefighter training? You know, if we're going to be training police officers, I'm assuming we'd foot that bill.
Well, I think that, yes, let's, let's look into the call, I I think that that um. There is some compelling argument. Or arguments for having the the two in, two out at the fire department. And um we've had, I think, a lot of people in town who have. Indicated their interest in um. Beefing up our safety.
But my concern with that, Becky, is there were only eighteen fire calls a year. And that seems to me a lot of overkill, we we survived for years with qualified fires. Seems to me if we can have employees in town qualified to call firefighters.
So when I started thirty years ago, I can remember that there were five members of the D P W, so this is concept is not new. It's just new on the police side, I think. Uh the five members of the D P W that were called firemen and I'm not sure what they did when they were working their 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 day job. When the fire alarm came in, I remember uh Bob Powers, who lived on uh Ploton Street, would would. I mean, a fire station, so it's not a new concept, uh but it just needs some some fine tuning. But on on our end, if we don't have the staff, we're not going to be able to assist.
And I would say to to both of your points, I always like to say, a a a measure I use is. The newspaper headline. Do you want to say the town supported the staffing at four in, four out? And the fire department was able to make a rescue? Or do you want the headlines to say town pays X amount of money because the understaffed fire department wasn't able to perform at them? One fire a year where we lose somebody's life and the building burns to the ground.
I'm sorry, but if you have call firefighters available, you have to four in and four out, they don't need to be full-time people.
Not until you're ten or fifteen minutes into the call, when rescue doesn't become a viable option. As I showed from the charts, that's backed up by statistics.
But if your, if your call person is is a new officer or a D P W person that can respond just as quickly.
But they're responding to the station, not to the scene because of the system way we have it set up. They should be going out the door on a truck, we don't want fourteen personal vehicles with red lights responding all over town, responding to the scene. They would come to the station to get their gear and await the next truck out the door, that's how it's always worked in this town. And that's how if it was going to continue is the model that works the best. I work in the system and you have cars parked all over the place, you have people speeding to get there, they have to carry all the gear in the trunk. There's an issue now with carcinogens in the gear and keeping the gear clean so people don't get cancer. There's a whole lot more rules and regulations now than it was back in the day when you just grabbed the helmet out of your truck and ran up to the fire and did something. So it would require a lot more planning.
I think and these are, these are elements we need to weigh, um Kathy Bellata has a.
Yeah, just to add to the comments, I I think you were asking um how we feel about the um. Uh the proposal in Greg's memo, I'm I'm generally supportive. However, Greg, the the information in your memo is incomplete, okay? We've got to look at the revenue side, okay? And maybe there's a way of funding some of what Chief Cleary wants by taking a look at the fees and increasing the revenue. And also getting the administrative work off of the plates of the firefighters and the police officers. There's way too much paper pushing, we we've got to take a serious look at that, those are two elements. We need to do before adding a whole lot of bodies to to the staff, however, I am generally supportive of of what you're looking at. Um the the only last concern I'll, I'll I'll state is. It, or I should say a question, is there some sort of a benchmark for the mutual aid? Because if we are on on the fireside or the ambulance, excuse me. If we are sending the ambulance out, our ambulance out forty times, uh forty times, but only getting mutual aid ten times back. You know, there's a net loss on on our side, which is fine, you know, we all want to be good neighbors and good humans. But um if we add more staff, are we just? You know, exacerbating that, are we are we taxing Manchester residents to to send an ambulance out? Instead of serving the residents here, so I I didn't know if there was any benchmark around mutual aid and what is a best practice?
Well, within Essex County, we have the Essex County Mutual Aid Agreement along the Essex County Fire Chiefs. The state with respect to ambulance response, it's mandated that if you have an ambulance in service. And you are called for mutual aid with any community that you have a mutual aid pack or memorandum of understanding. You must send that ambulance.
And I would not expect anything else, my question is is a little bit different though. I I guess what I'm saying is we seem to be doing our fair share of mutual aid.
Yeah.
Okay, we're doing more than our fair share. And are the other chiefs, the other towns in Essex County, are they doing their fair share? Or they?
Yes, they are, it comes up at every one of our meetings and we we're having regional meetings now with all the fire departments and all the private ambulance services. To try and solve this problem.
Okay.
Lynn Field is field fielding three ambulances a day with two of them spending most of their time in Saugus. Middleton's in P V D, um Northeast Ambulance is backing up. Uh Atlantic in in Lynn. Um when Rockport can't field their ambulance and Gloucester's too busy and Bowport's unavailable, we're going to Rockport. So it's it's a giant chess game that uh starts with the hospitals not being able to take patients. And then trickling down into EMS field, so.
Yeah, so I I it sounds like everybody's, yeah, sounds like everybody's cooperating really well, it's more, my question is more around the planning. And making sure that what we're planning for is to take care of the residents of Manchester. And 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 I'm hopeful that the other towns are are planning for for their residents as well.
Sure.
Kathy, I'm just.
Thank you.
So Kathy, when you talk about wanting to see the puts and takes in a waterfall chart form or something like that. Um is that, is, are you also asking for uh mutual aid benchmarks?
Yeah, that was different, the puts and takes, the waterfall chart, it was the same thing Mike, Mike was asking for. You know, there are some standard financial templates that you can just easily show where the savings are coming from. And what are additional costs? And and so uh, you know, I'm assuming Andrea has has those types of charts, Greg, if 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 not, we can certainly get her some examples.
But you want some, you want some to see what some of the other communities around. When we have a, the the memorandum of understanding?
No, Mike, my, it was a general question, I didn't know if we had any, I I just wanted to make sure that since we are doing our fair share. That other Essex County communities are doing their fair share, if if they're they're meeting together and. And I I guess if there is information available, it would be nice to see it. Um I don't want anybody to create information around mutual aid that doesn't already exist, but I just want to make sure other folks are doing their fair share.
Thank you, um Anne, just, oh, there's, in the um Chief Cleary's. Handout on funds received, he has included the ambulance, which is sort of the elephant. In with all of the other fees, the other fees which we are in a position to raise the prices on, come about seventeen thousand dollars a year. And so I think spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to double that is maybe not the best use of time.
Yep.
So sir, I was, I was just thinking, we've we've heard three different plans from Public Safety. Greg has his memo, which is offering something that's, you know, kind of a different approach. It would be really helpful, I think, for us to be able to see what the budget impacts of each of those scenarios is. Like, I would like to see um Chief Fitzgerald's proposed plan, even if it's over the course of, you know, one or two or three years. I'd like to see the impact of that uh at, once it's uh thrown into all of our other town costs, including school, et cetera, whatever. Uh and the same for Chief Cleary. Uh, and the same for Chief Cleary and also, uh, fires.
So you want with, with just, at, just the police, just Chief Fitzgerald's add?
No, she wants, he wants the price for each separate, the component for each safety official.
But then, but, but where, you know, it starts to get a little complicated is then I do want to see what that translates in when we look at our entire budget. You know, like we used to have the spreadsheet that we would throw up on the wall. It was very easy to kind of plug in some numbers and see what that did to our, our tax increase. Uh, and whether it put us over the two and a half or, or, or under.
Are, are you looking to compare and contrast, say, you know, I'll call it Greg's ideas, Greg's strategy of, you know, as, as compared to if you just said, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. I would, I would have been the cost context, which is kind of our, our metrics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also with measures against the savings that we got in front of regionalization, so.
Right, and, and, and as relates to any kind of revenue side, which, you know, would get folded in, as, as has been pointed out.
Well, and, and I think we need an understanding if there's other places in, like the capital was expanded a lot this year.
Yeah.
And the question is, is can some of that be backed down if we need to be spending more on personnel?
Right.
Because the budget presented was two and a half percent.
Yeah, because I, so I think that kind of, that would allow us to have that kind of, you know, do that kind of sensitivity analysis and say, okay, if we do this, if we go this way, and this is what the townspeople want, you know, then we have to kind of back off on the rate of spend on our capital projects, for example.
Becky, one more thing? Sorry, Becky. Sorry, thank you. Um, just one more thing, um, regarding the, uh, the fee structure and, um, the administrative stuff, I, I think that this is directly related to one of our select board goals. So we can talk about this at maybe a select board meeting, but one of our goals is to look at how we deliver services. What are some different models? And public safety may be the first place we want to take a look at, um, some of that next level detail. Okay, so um, I think it's directly related to our goals because there's different ways of setting up fee structures. Um, you know, uh, for different types of services and, and that might help us on the revenue side.
And I think we just need to be aware that it's probably unlikely that that can be completed as part of this budget review.
I, I agree with that, and I just think we can't start too early.
Right. We have to, I mean, there, there are fees that are overseen by the state that, that are happened, but so it's you know, a lot of work.
Yes.
Yeah, I would just emphasize what Andy said, Greg, on the multi-year model, if we could have a line that went out, say, three years. And so if we looked at four and, you know, two in, two back, the, the police model, but really see what that looks like over three years, at which point Manchester is paying full dime for all of it. Or, and then what happens in the long run? Just so we can see that.
I also have an impression I couldn't buy on the three-year period for the horror masters also, I think, an element where there's going to be a lot of change. I, I think your, your plans and for the department could well change it to be a portion of the police department, I think.
Right. That's.
And then the administrative function would be another part of.
So the, the, the administrative piece is, uh, it is completely separated from the police department. And we, we're talking about infrastructure of infrastructure mostly. And, uh, votes, but the equipment needed for, for the higher, I mean, I suppose I could go over the police, but their job is enforcement. They have a full plate. All right.
We do have a bylaw that establishes the horror master position as not holding any other full-time position in town.
Right.
So we would have to go to town meeting if we want to change the structure of that.
I don't think we want to go any deeper into this.
Right.
Now.
I know, I went, I was, I was going in a totally different direction. We talked, the, the career had talked about a safer grant. And Laurie's comment reminded me of that.
It's my understanding we didn't get it.
We didn't.
We didn't get it this year, but in last year, when I met with the FinCon, that's what I presented as a primary idea to get by and, and for whatever reason, they chose not to discuss that and gave us the extra floater in place of pursuing a safer grant for firefighters. So that's why I was looking at a budgetary three-year phase in the plan that left the safer grant right out because it didn't appear that people on either side were interested.
I think you're mischaracterizing what we were saying. We were saying that at that point in time, we were not in a position to allow three new firefighters to come in through a safer grant that would require the town to pay them down the road. And now, and then we heard, well, we weren't approved for the safer grant anyway, but you did apply for it.
I, well, yeah, I, I had, because there was a deadline before.
There was a negative clip.
Right.
It's basically how it worked. You get the cap, but then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was the concern with, the safer grant was applied for before any positions were approved. And that was our source of concern.
And it's a ten-year offset when we get charged for the dispatch. Is that, the, the county has absorbed that cost for a while and there's going to be a charge down the road for that.
Oh, no, no, there's no, no, no.
No, we don't expect it. I don't think they have any intention of charging us. While we're on the finance. Okay, now, one thing I'll just mention while we're all here is, I know it's later in the agenda, um, but Chief Fitzgerald indicated he was not going to be here on February second, and I tentatively scheduled the public safety budgets for February second. And I'm suggesting that instead we do the town budgets on the second and do public safety on the night. That makes sense? So, yeah. And we'll have to do CPC on the night. We'll do that first. And then we're planning on public health and library on the sixteen.
So that's the joint.
It's up to you. Um, and we have the school district on January twenty-sixth that posted that agenda. Yeah, what are we doing next week? I posted that agenda.
You're going to have to think. Be on Zoom. The annual meeting.
Okay. And then the final school district budget on February twenty-third. And then we have to be done. My understanding.
Yes, we do. Hey. So which of those meetings would you like? So, I mean, I, I think the select board should be around for public safety. Or not at that point. But you.
It's funny, yeah.
I mean, the, the extent to which we can agree on things together.
Yep.
Is helpful. Um, instead of, I mean, you do one thing and us do something else. So we have that one year.
And that's one of the things we've been talking about on the select board is doing more things along these lines so that we're not.
And we, I felt, I felt we needed to have public health come in because there were issues last year that they wanted to be heard and we want to hear about their health agent.
Board of Health.
Their hired, yeah. Um, and what the impact is that on their budget. And then library, we usually have come in as a courtesy. Because it's a big budget.
Um, you know, I'll, I'll chat with Sarah and then I'll email select board.
Because in the one on town budgets, one on town budgets, we might be talking about some staffing issues also. Okay. We still have minutes to go through. If anybody looked at them. We'll defer them to next one.
You have more to do?
Harry, no, no business.
Not unless somebody has something they want to know.
Shall we do a, a, a joint?
So just a question on ambulance.
Oh, yeah.
So how do you, how do you want to handle that discussion?
Am I correct that the a police officer could be the second person in the second ambulance because they're EMT trained?
Yes. But I do have a new twist on the ambulance.
You have a what?
A twist on where ambulance sits and the apparatus replacement plan.
A twist, alright.
Well, because as of now, we, we found out that our ladder truck, even after all the work, still can't still can't pass emissions, which means it's still not viable for us and we're exploring options for whether it can be fixed to even be made viable. It was slated to be replaced in twenty twenty-one. It's now twenty twenty-three. We're supposed to get it to twenty twenty-six. That doesn't look like it's going to happen. Which means my need for an aerial ladder supersedes my need for a new ambulance. So I'm happy to move to the seven-year plan. Order a new ambulance two years from now. It will show up two years after that and will be on the seven-year plan. And don't feel that any money out of the apparatus replacement fund should be spent to put ambulance two back in service. Because the cost of an aerial ladder, if we buy it today, is one point one million dollars. It's slated to go up six percent in April and it's slated to go up another six percent in June.
So, well, we have all of the information on that, the cost to repair the, the ladder truck, um, prior to the February ninth meeting.
They don't know if it can be repaired. The, the, the dealership that I'm working with is talking to Detroit Diesel and trying to get recommendations. The first recommendation we did and paid the money for made the emissions actually worse and it failed again.
But what I'm saying is, is if you want it funded, something funded in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
Yes.
You need to have the details to us prior to February ninth.
Yes, I will.
So we can vote on it on February ninth before you're not going to get it.
Oh, I understand that. I, I will be resubmitting it. I knew that would, I just may brought this up in light of knowing that now the ambulance and the spare ambulance are not the priority.
But we, we will, we will need to, to have a comparison of cost to repair versus new.
What I'm saying is there, there may be no cost. Because the ladder truck was slated to get rid of in twenty twenty-six anyway. It's already gone past the twenty-year recommended.
That's irrelevant to us. The fact of the matter.
But it's not irrelevant to me. That's what I'm saying.
What's the price? We need to understand the prices.
And, and to me, they're, they're co-mingling two very different things. I understand what you're saying, that in your world, your priority of the ladder truck now supersedes ambulance. But to me, I think it'd be better to just keep them two very independent things, you know, there's the eighteen grand that would fix ambulance two, and then there's the whatever dollars, I don't, one point one, you know, for the, I mean, they're two different.
Actually more than eighteen grand to fix ambulance two. I've given you the sheet on that. It's almost close to a hundred thousand dollars to make ambulance two a viable second ambulance. Because it's seventy thousand dollars for the power stretcher and five thousand dollars to put the radios back in, in addition to putting a new motor.
But we also discussed the sale of, uh,
the squad, which is a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And I'd like to see how often.
I, I can show that. And, and part of that, and, and Greg and I have had this discussion, part of the ladder's viability was when we had a call department and had additional people. And if our staffing goes to four, it changes the use of the ladder truck. Also, the ladder truck, since it comes with a pump, can act as a spare engine. If we sell the squad, then we only have a single engine that has water and can pump water. If that goes out of service, we have no capability to put out a fire.
Well, we only get ten calls a year.
We get ten actual fires a year. We have fourteen hundred and seven, twenty-four calls for service. And we don't know when we're going to need it and when we're not going to need it.
How many, we're, we're, I think with Sarah's, Sarah's really too, we're going to have to ten call, uh, ten calls to fire. How many of them required ladder truck?
I'd have to go back and look because that's not how we track it. I would have, I would have to dig into it. Um, our ladder truck does, is another piece that goes to mutual aid to a lot of different communities that have relied on it. Um, that's what our, we contribute because they contribute their ladder to us when we're tied up and can't put it on the road. Also, if we had the staffing of four, we would have either one or two people that would be taking it on all the fire calls. But my point is without, the ladder truck would be a good backup if something happened to our engine. Our engine would be a good backup if something happens to the ladder because they both have firefighting capability. If we sell the squad and we don't replace the ladder, we have one piece that can put out a fire. If that breaks, we have nothing in town that can respond to a fire and put it out.
We have the thing in seaside one.
Well, yeah, that requires a lot of volunteers, full horses, and we don't have either of those. Because part of the thought was, and I mentioned it, and part of my apparatus replacement plan was to sell the squad, buy a new pumper and move our current pumper into reserve status. This would eliminate the need for a reserve pumper because if the pumper broke, we would use the ladder in its place and vice versa. So the ladder has double as a quint, it has a pump and operates as a pumper as well as operating as an aerial one.
What's the pump cost?
Right now, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Why is there not getting one for four hundred?
I have no idea what they're buying. No idea what they're buying.
So the, the, the viability of repair of the existing ladder truck is dependent upon what you hear back from Detroit Diesel.
Yes.
Whether or not they can resurrect that existing.
That motor.
Motor.
The challenge is the motor will run for five hundred thousand miles.
What are, and I would be helpful to understand in that, uh, along that line, whether a new motor that could satisfy current emission standards is an option.
Well, what I, what I would say with that, that still means we were still planning on getting a ladder in twenty twenty-six. But the aerial components that are covered by NFPA.
Yeah.
The, that, after twenty years, the ladder truck are not as reliable and that's the safety factor with respect to using the aerial, not necessarily the operation of that, and that's why they give it a twenty-year.
Yeah.
Recommended. That's why we tried to get it to twenty twenty-six because it's still in good shape. The aerial wise and safety wise it is, but it can't get a valid state inspection standard.
Okay, we just, we just need more clarity around.
I'm getting all the information.
This equipment in the fire department is like a moving target. And.
Well, priorities change because things break that were not expected.
Well.
I also have a question though.
Sure.
Uh, so we're not talking safety. If you took an, if you would have put a, uh, uh, a, a stick on the, on the, on the ride truck, you would have a black eye as opposed to a red eye. Is that about right?
Yes, it has a rejection stick.
How much is rejection? I was driving on a rejection sticker.
The neighbor who's been driving on one for two years.
Yes. This is going to seem even more than usual. I'm not sure that it is entirely your decision as to whether the town wants to have two ambulances. I think that, that is something that this group of people listening to what we hear from the town about what they want for emergency medical services is a decision that, that we certainly will listen, but it's not something that where you can say, nope, scratch that off the list.
I think we need to talk about this on February ninth. We do the public safety budget.
Okay.
And I will have you the information then.
Yeah.
Andy, did you have a comment you wanted to say?
Um, I was just, you know, part of our energy on the, on the fire equipment kind of precedes, predates you. Um, because that squad truck that we're now considering selling.
Yep.
We bought under the last.
Right.
Administration.
Under Chief Cleary.
So the, and so the. So that, and so there's this, you know, there's this frustration of, you know, that we're. The needle's always moving in a different direction.
Greg had expressed.
And I, and I understand, you know, like a month ago, we weren't looking at an emissions problem with, uh, with the ladder truck. So, but that's where we're coming.
No, and I, I totally understand that.
Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn the finance committee. Dean, Peter.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
And, and.
Have a motion to adjourn? So. Harrison, second, and Brian Solace, you roll all the votes. Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Brian Solace, Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. That's a wrap, kids. Um, public safety, thank you all. Very, very.
Thank you.